All right, we'll go ahead and call to order our February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Trask, would you please lead us?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, moving on to item number three, roll call. If the clerk would please take role.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schudy.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Item four point one, if the clerk would please report the correspondence.
The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding adaptive management of activities to reflect hatchery genetic management. Cheryl Williams sent an application for the Board of Equalization. And Jerry Roberts and Judy Nicholson sent an application for the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission.
Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board openings news release. John Taylor, if you'd please read the release. John, you're with us? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead and read the release. Take me one second to get down there. Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board openings. The Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking applications from community members who are interested in serving on the Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board. The Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board provides recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding the planning, acquisition, and development of parks, trails, and related programs in Mason County. The Parks and Trails Advisory Board is a seven-member board appointed by the Mason County Commissioners. Ideally, there would be two positions from each Commissioner District and one at-large position. If the vacancies cannot be filled with members from their respective districts as desired, at-large members residing anywhere in Mason County can be substituted. The intent is to provide equal geographic representation from throughout Mason County, if possible. If you have an interest in parks, trails, or other outdoor recreational opportunities and would like to make a difference in your community, you're encouraged to apply. The Mason County Parks and Trails Advisory Board typically meets the fourth Thursday of each month at five fifteen PM in Shelton. Interested citizens may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioners Office, four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling Shelton at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or from Belfair at three six zero two seven five four four six seven, also extension four one nine, or visit the Mason County website at www.co.mason.wa.us. Applications will be accepted until positions are filled. And I guess just one note on there, Diane, if you're on, those have been meeting via Zoom, correct?
Yes, well, no, they've been in person with Zoom as an option. We've done both.
Okay, okay, thank you. Moving on to item number five, open forum for citizen input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on today's agenda. So we do have several items on the action agenda and three public hearings. So if you have any comment on items that are not on the agenda today, now's the time to do it. You can either do it by using the reactions and raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. If you're unable to do that, feel free to unmute yourself and state your name and the chair will recognize you. Are there any members of the public for comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to item number six, adoption of today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
They moved and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next up, we have item number seven, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval. The January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two briefing minutes and the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two commission minutes.
So moved and seconded to approve the January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two briefing minutes and January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two commission minutes. Any discussion commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight, this is approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda, at which point Commissioner or a member of the public may ask to have an item removed for a separate discussion vote. We will go through the items. Commissioner Netherland, if you'd please take items eight point one through eight point eight. Commissioner Trask, eight point nine through eight point seventeen, and I'll take the remainder.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Item number eight point one, approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance claims clearing fund warrants number eight zero eight five eight five four through eight zero eight six two four eight. The amount, one million, six hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars and twelve cents. Treasurer's electronic remittance, three million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, eight dollars, fifty-four cents. Item number eight point two, approval to reallocate a hundred thousand dollars from existing public utility district number one, PUD one residential customer arrears a re- just contract to a new contract for the PUD one Eldon Fiber Build-Out project and authorize Mark Neri County Administrator to amend the existing American Rescue Plan Act ARPA contract, enter into a new contract and sign the sub-recipient contracts. Item number eight point three, approval of the contract amendment with healthcare delivery to increase the holiday nursing hours for the jail from twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents an hour to thirty dollars an hour retroactive from January first, twenty twenty-one. Item number eight point, eight point four, approval to hires for the retiring financial analyst position in support services on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two for approximately one month of succession training. Item number eight point four, approval to concur with Thurston County Appointment of Mary Beth Harrington to the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees for a term that will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Item number eight point six, approval for Mark Neri County Administrator to sign the Sand Hill Park Concession Stand Contract for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three with the North Mason Little League. Item number eight point seven, approval to amend resolution number six dash one nine designating the appointing officers from Mason County for the Washington County's Risk Pool. And item number eight point eight, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine fifteen AM to consider the amendments to chapter six point three two preliminary planning standards.
Item eight point nine, approval to advertise and hire for a community services, for a community service officer full-time position for the North Precinct in Belfair for approximately, for an approximate twenty twenty-two budget impact of fifty-three thousand. Item eight point ten, approval to pay Nicole Wilston, Risk and Safety Compliance Manager, ten percent lead pay, lead pay ending on March first, twenty twenty-two. Item eight point eleven, approval for Mark Neri County Administrator to sign the contract in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars with Robert W. Drill Landscape Architect PS for planning and RCO grant preparation for Sand Hill Park multipurpose turf field and Union Community Park Shelter and to sign the letter of intent to the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. Item eight point twelve, approval of the Service Services Agreement with Corrections Technology Group for the maintenance and repair of specified security systems at the Mason County Jail. Item eight point thirteen, approval of the amendment to consolidated contract number CLH three one zero one nine to add statements of work for COVID-nineteen mess vaccinations, the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-two thousand for foundational public health services, fifty thousand, seven hundred and seventy for ongoing services for maternal and child health block grant, twenty-three thousand fee for Office of Drinking Water Group A program for performing sanitary surveys, six thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine for Office of Drinking Water Group B program, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and three dollars for planning and tracking COVID-nineteen immunizations and cases for the Office of Immunizations, seventy-five thousand for onsite sewage systems for local management plan, and five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for ongoing work for sampling and posting beaches for recreational shellfish. Item eight point fourteen, approval for the chair to execute the road levy certification for twenty twenty-two. Item eight point fifteen, approval to authorize public works to procure two equipment trailers from OSW Equipment and Repair LLC off of the Washington State contract for a total of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents plus tax. Item eight point one six has been removed. Item eight point seventeen, approval for the approval of the contracts for both District Court and Superior Court for continued services with South Defenders for conflict and overflow cases.
Item eight point one eight, approval of the Small Works Garbrough Repair Project and Change Order Number One for eight additional locations that need to be repaired in the amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and eighty-five cents. Item eight point one nine, approval of the sole source purchased from correct equipment of seventy grinder pumps and conversion kits for a total amount of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-six cents, which is a savings of about thirty point six seven percent. Item eight point two zero, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine fifteen AM to take public comment on the surplus of tax parcels numbered three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four three and three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four four. Item eight point two one, approval to reappoint Isaiah Johnson and Timothy Opilia Jr. to the Planning Advisory Committee for terms ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Item eight point two two, approval to appoint Cheryl Williams as a regular member of the Mason County Board of Equalization to fill a position with a term ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And item eight point two three, approval to reschedule the Belfair Sewer Extension Public Hearing for March first, twenty twenty-two at nine fifteen AM to March first, twenty twenty-two at six PM. Commissioners, having read through the items on the agenda, are there any items that you'd like to have removed for a separate discussion or vote? Okay. Members of the public, having read through the items, are there any questions or items that you would like to have removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ken Van Busker, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, sir, thank you. I just have a question about item eight point two three. That was just added to the agenda. Is there a reason why the the time was changed?
Yeah, so, Ken, I think we're hoping to get more public com- comment and participation by holding the meeting in the evening versus having the meeting at our regular meeting in the morning.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that have questions on items on the agenda or would like to have an item removed for a separate discussion or vote? Okay, seeing none, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve items eight point one through eight point two three as written.
I'll second.
Then moved and seconded to approve items eight point one through items eight point two three as presented. Commissioners, any discussion?
One comment, if I made a special thank you to Cheryl Williams for stepping forward to take on the full-time position there and all the work she's done with the community for years of stepping up.
And just real quick, I think every item on here is so important and really deserves a lot of attention. I think there's just a ton of information here, and I would encourage everyone to take a look at these, and you'll see just how important they are to Mason County.
Yeah, I just also want to point out, I appreciate both of those comments, Commissioners. The addition of the community service officer for the North Precinct in Belfair, this is something that the Sheriff's Office has really advocated for over the last, for sure, the last year, but probably longer than that, as most of you probably know, that that's a office that has been run almost exclusively by volunteers. And this is a really important investment for the North Mason community. We're going to be talking in a little bit about growth in Belfair and in North Mason, and so with growth comes opportunities for us to support the community in other ways and public safety is one of those, and so appreciate the Commission's work on this, but also really appreciate the Sheriff's Office advocating for that part of the county as well. Commissioners, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, and the motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, other business, an opportunity for department heads and elected officials to address the commission. Are there any department heads or electeds that would like to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number ten. This is our public hearings. We have reached the nine fifteen AM mark, and so we can move into item ten point one, a public hearing to take public comment and consider adoption of the updated twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven Mason County Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. And Diane, are you kicking us off?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So as stated, it's a public hearing to consider adoption of the updated comp plan for parks. Last summer, the county contracted with Bob Droll and Associates to go through this process, and Bob is on the meeting today. So I'd like to turn it over to him to provide a summary of what we went through, what this means. That's all right with the board?
Yep, no problem.
Good morning, Bob. Good morning, Bob Droll Landscape Architect. We started this process in August of last year. So it happened pretty quickly, and this is really an update at the two thousand thirteen and then the two thousand eighteen, which really never got adopted of that post-plan. And we have conducted surveys and other methods of gathering public input. And before you, you have the draft plan. There's seven chapters in there. In the first six chapters, Dan Penrose, SCJ Alliance, will give us an overview. And I'll kind of wrap it up with chapter seven, which is the Capital Improvement Plan. So, Dan, you there?
Thanks, Bob. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, just go over this real quick. I know you've all had a chance to review this. And so based on the table of contents, the most post-plans, parks, recreation, open space plans contain an introduction, goals, and objectives, a public involvement section, an inventory of your parks, something called a demand and needs analysis, and also has recommendations and prioritizations of county investments that is seen through there in chapter seven, the Funding and Capital Improvements portion. So Bob's going to cover that list a little bit. I just thought I would highlight a few of the of the things, as Bob said, we started in August and we launched this, the the survey after some input from the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee. And that was, that was real instrumental to getting that survey refined and dialed in and out to the community. Really strong response to that survey, as I think I said at one of your previous meetings, we had seven hundred and ninety respondents to that survey, pretty well distributed across the county based on, you know, geography and and population centers. The the greatest need identified during that survey was kind of split between identifying and acqui- acquiring and improving development for trails and also acquiring and improving development for access to water bodies. So those both had about half of the the respondents on each of those for the survey responded that they were supportive of those those efforts. The greatest barrier for the respondents was that many people, almost sixty percent of the respondents, were unaware of the location of the park facilities, and therefore they did not use them. Followed by thirty-nine percent of safety and security concerns and proximity. It's a, it's a big county, so you'd expect that, that not everyone can use every, every park as maybe as frequently as they would like due to distance. And then twenty-eight percent said that poor maintenance and cleanliness was a reason that they, they didn't use the park systems. So we take that, we take that information and and take it, took it back to the committee and developed a series of recommendations and improvements that we suggested, and the the way that you do park planning is through this kind of, it's similar to kind of the comp plan where you have population growth, and that kind of drives how you're going to accommodate additional development growth or even, you know, a change like you're considering now with the Belfair EGA. In the, on the park side, when you do planning, it's a, it's a level of service analysis, which is a kind of a statistical way that across the state that we that we analyze based on population numbers and acreage of parks or miles of trails. The whole reason for doing the park plan update is to A, recognize that the county has grown since, you know, over the last nine or ten years, and so you want to make sure that the park plan reflects the interests of the people who now call Mason County home. And you want to make sure you're, you're competitive for RCO grants. So as, as you just approved on your, your action agenda there, there, there are projects that the county wishes to apply for grant money, and in order to do that, you have to have a, a park plan that's updated. So we're expecting to submit this park plan by March first to RCO for consideration. That is their initial deadline for, for plan consideration. So that's, that's kind of the rationale about why, you know, why you update these, these documents. And finally, it's got a, a, an inventory of your park systems. And so that, that inventory was, was really well done already. A lot of your parks, we have a really solid handle on what, what we have. Bob took a couple trips around the county to, to look at those parks and assess them, and then he used that information to kind of plug into what investments might need to improve the condition or the use of that, that park facility. I think I'll all kind of hand it back over to Bob to talk about, about that. The, the highest level takeaway, as I addressed, was people want to make sure that the county is taking care of its existing facilities and making, making targeted investments and improvements to those facilities in a way that, that serves a lot of users. So Bobby, want to talk a little bit about the table seven point one in the Funding and Capital Improvement Plan chapter?
Sure. Table seven point one, page fifty-two, really has to do with the immediate six-year capital improvement plan. And as Dan just mentioned, really, most of this is focused on taking care of what you have, which is what we heard the public say. But also, it's got one or two projects that are new projects that address geographic deficiencies, such as the soccer football field up in the Belfair area at Sand Hill Park and the Union Shelter, a community, the shelter at the Union Community Park, which is, both of those are going to be RCO grants. For this six-year planning horizon, which is twenty-two to twenty-eight, the total amount is nine point eight million dollars. And rarely does a, a community or county accomplish all of those. But these are, been identified by the Park Board and hopefully endorsed by the Commission as projects for serious consideration of really further, some of that needs some further development. Some of these projects are maintenance projects that don't really need a study or any further design consideration, but some of them do. So these projects, the capital costs for all of these projects includes the capital costs, as I can assess it in today's dollars, taxes, contingency, little escalation, all the design, all the costs that's associated with this type of improvement. But remember, this is done at a broad thirty thousand-foot scale. So, yeah, I went and visited a number of these different parks, and, you know, of my twenty years of involvement with Mason County Parks, we kind of came up with this, this list that the Park Board endorsed and actually ranked. Within the highest priority and the moderate and the lowest priority, those projects that are listed in those categories aren't necessarily ranked themselves. And that's something that you'll need to do, not today or even for this document, but as you proceed and the public speaks out to what some of these projects might be, the priority of what those projects might be. So, once again, it's about nine point eight million dollars capital improvements for just the six-year planning horizon. And that kind of summarizes your capital improvement for that planning horizon. In the document, that's not a document you have, but we will give this to Diane and John Taylor, is a rather detailed list of every single park and every single improvement within that park in a spreadsheet format with different worksheets. It's pretty involved and not really presented in this case, but Diane will, and John will have it if you folks want to take a look at that. So I, I think that where we're at today is, is really good. We need to adopt this. Dan has reached out to RCO, and March first is the deadline for getting this approved by our, by the RCO. And so we can submit those RCO grants, although he has talked to him, and if we don't meet that deadline right away, I believe that we'll still be okay. So with that, that kind of summarizes where we're at.
Great. Anything, anything else?
I do want to add that Ken Van Busker emailed in comments on this plan. It's his opinion that the county has enough to deal with existing facilities without adding new county facilities and projects proposed by other unnamed public agencies for the twenty-two to twenty-seven timeframe. And those comments will be kept in the record.
Yeah, let me just speak that for a second. The, the Park Board felt that recognition of other projects and other agencies are doing in the county, or other recreation-type projects is worthy of a mention in the park plan. So we're not asking, or Mason County isn't endorsing or supporting these, but just listing it and recognizing that those type of facilities, not undertaken by Mason County, but by other agencies, are perhaps good projects that you might want to verbally and support and even in, in writing.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions for Diane or Bob or Dan?
No, just a, a comment. Man, you guys, that's quite the document. Appreciate your, your big brains jumping in on that. It's always great to go to our, our experts, and you guys are definitely definitely are, are experts. And Bob, you've been here for a while. We've never met face to face, but all I hear are good things about you, so great job.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, it's an honor and a pleasure to work in Mason County, and your staff over the years has been, have been wonderful to work with.
They're pretty awesome, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so if there are no other Commissioner questions at this time, I'll open it up to questions from members of the public. Again, if you have a question on the presentation that we just watched or received, go ahead and use the raise hand feature. Again, this is just questions. We will have an opportunity for comment on the plan here in a few moments. Are there any questions? I don't see any hands raised right now. Are there, if there are any questions, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name. The chair will recognize you. Okay, there are no questions from the public. With that, we'll move into public comment. So if you have a comment on the parks plan that was presented today, again, use the raise hand feature. Not seeing any hands raised. There's, oh, I see one hand. Jeff Carey, is that a hand raised? All right, go for it, Jeff.
Hey, just a quick thing. And don't want to get sideways with the EIS, and always got to kill the phone. But with the, with respect to the document, there's, the, it doesn't synchronize up real well with the capital facilities portion of the EIS. In other words, the EIS, you call out ninety-five acres or so, that's one of your options. And in all the capital plans and all the notes that I see through the, through the plan, I don't see really any reference to development in the budget. So, anyway. The, the short and sweet is, I believe, like a lot of these things, they should all synchronize up with each other, and at the moment, the parks plan doesn't really sync up with the EIS yet. So that's the gist of it. Thank you. that's the gist of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Again, you can either raise your hand or unmute yourself. And I'll chair recognize you. Any comments on the park plan? Lisa Renfro, do you have a comment on the parks plan?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead with your comment.
Yeah, I was wondering if big developers who build big communities, if it is required or can it be required for them to have a community park within a big development for, you know, a big community housing residential, would that take the burden off of the excise tax to make it more interchangeable with other excise tax usage?
So I'll maybe maybe Bob, if you have any thoughts on that, just in in your experience working with other communities and their park development?
Well, sometimes, but that's the community planning issue is that they would take that up and it's called an exaction. And some, oh, you'd have to develop a policy for that and then codify it through your your commission process. And that would be part of your development code.
Yeah, that was my question, if that could be possible.
Well, it's certainly possible. I I'm not aware of anything like that underway with community planning in Mason County right now.
Okay, maybe futuristically.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other comments on the park plan? Okay, seeing no additional comments on the parks plan, we'll close public comment and move to Commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the 2022 through 2027 Mason County Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails Pro-Stud Plan.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve the 2022-2027 Mason County Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails Pro-Stud Plan. Any discussion, Commissioners?
Jumping real quick and just think, sorry, our park staff, to include Bud and Ann, Bud also known as Carl. And then also the Advisory Board, they put in time and energy on this, so definitely want to thank them for that. And also Diane, she is a rock star and and I really want to thank her for her time and her energy that she has been putting into this. So thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any other discussion? I'll echo that. You know, Diane was asked, this was this was a other duties as assigned kind of thing for Diane when Ross McDowell left the county. And she just filled in so admirably and got this process underway. And I know that she didn't do alone, as Commissioner Truss mentioned, you know, Bud and Ann on our our parks team. But also Bob and Dan and just being, you know, able to work with our Parks Advisory Board. You know, as a tight turnaround, as Bob said, but they were able to work through public comment and get a lot of really good input in a short amount of time, even given some of the restraints that we've had to deal with. And so it's a really thorough plan. There are a lot of really good projects on there, particularly excited that we're going out, as we already voted today to to work on some projects at Sand Hill. It's a really important park and I really think there is room to get some more parity between Sand Hill and MCRNA here in Shelton, so that we have equal facilities across the county. But also the Community Shelter Pavilion Project in Union. I'm excited to see that project move forward, and I hope RCO is supportive of both of these projects. They're so impactful and meaningful for the community. So just hats off Bob and Dan and Diane and your whole team. Just really appreciate you being able to put this project together.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. And the motion carries. Okay, moving on to our next item, item 10.2, approval of the Mason County Public Utility District Number One Franchise Agreement Amendment to allow PUD 1 to construct, operate, and maintain their fiber optic communication in the county rights of way. And I'll kick it over to Mike Collins.
Good morning. Public Works has received a request from Mason County Public Work of PUD Number One to amend their franchise agreement with the county to include their fiber optic communication for construction, operation, and maintenance. The amendment would cover all county roads in the PUD service area. They paid their amendment fee and we would support this.
Commissioners, any questions for staff on this item? Okay, members of the public, any questions on item 10.2? Again, you can use the raise hand feature. If you're unable to do that, you can unmute yourself and state your name. The chair will recognize you. Any questions on item 10.2? Okay, seeing no hands raised and no voices with questions, I'll close the question period. And we'll move on to public comment. Members of the public have commented on item 10.2. Again, use the hand raised feature or unmute yourself and state your name. There any comments on item 10.2? One last time, any members of the public have comment for item 10.2 and raise your hand or unmute yourself? Okay, seeing no comments on item 10.2, I'll close public comment and move to Commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move this board approved amendment to allow Mason County PUD 1 to construct, operate, maintain their fiber optic communications in the county's right of way.
I'll second.
Be moved, must be moved and seconded to approve the amendment to allow PUD 1 to construct, operate, and maintain their fiber optic communications in the county rights of way. Any discussion?
Great, move forward.
With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And the motion carries. Moving on to item 10.3, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of a Planned Action Ordinance for the Belfair Urban Growth Area, Amendments to the Mason County Comprehensive Plan, Belfair UGA Subarea Plan, and Amendments to Title 17 Belfair UGA Zoning Code. And we'll send it over to Kel Rowan from Community Development.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
I'm Kel Rowan with Mason County Planning Department. I'm also joined this morning by Lisa Greeter and Kevin Gifford of Burke Consulting. We've been working on this planned action ordinance for the last couple of years. We started, we put the RFP out back in February of 2020. So here it is, February 2022. So just about two years. Kevin and Lisa will have a PowerPoint presentation to go over, just to summarize. And of course, we can answer any questions for folks. And we'll go ahead and get started. There are, I do want to remind the Commission that there are three different elements that you'll be considering for adoption. One is the planned action ordinance. The other is the comp plan and subarea plan amendments. And that's the Belfair Subarea Plan. And then also the development regulation amendments that go along with that.
Morning, everyone. Give me all a thumbs up if you can see my see the slides on the screen there. Excellent. Thank you very much. So good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for having us. My name is Kevin Gifford. I'm a Senior Associate Land Use Planner with Burke Consulting. And as Kel mentioned, I'm joined by Lisa Greeter, one of our principals this morning. And we're going to walk you through the process for the Belfair UGA Subarea Plan Update and Planned Action Ordinance. A lot of this information is going to be stuff that you've seen before, previous briefings. We wanted to make sure that we got all of it into the record for the benefit of folks who are joining us this morning, who haven't been able to attend the previous meetings. So this morning, we've just got, we're kind of talking about kind of three different things, as Kel mentioned. First of all, there's the update to the Belfair UGA Plan and the associated zoning. Then there would be the creation of a new planned action ordinance to govern development in this area and streamline CEPA review for future development under that framework. And then there we're going to discuss some associated comprehensive plan amendments that would need to be made for consistency after you adopt this plan. So first of all, just kind of jumping back and giving the overview of the planning history in Belfair and some of the trends. Planning for this area started way back in 2002 with the Belfair Waste Water Facility Plan, kind of laying the groundwork for urban services in this area by establishing a sewer service area and a treatment facility. And with the the idea that expansion of that sewer service is necessary to protect water quality as urban development occurs. This was followed shortly thereafter in 2004 with the adoption of the Belfair UGA Subarea Plan, which is the original plan that established a vision for the Belfair community, including land use patterns, urban design standards, and priorities around circulation and environmental protection, as well as a series of implementation measures for how to accomplish those goals. Moving a little bit closer to the present, one of the big factors in planning in this area is the upcoming SR3 Freight Corridor plan that's been underway for the last few years that is coming right through the edge of the Belfair UGA and will obviously have a big impact on the area. This is designed to reduce regional trips through the downtown Belfair area and allow traffic to bypass this area. But however, would still need to create a connection so that folks can get from downtown Belfair onto the bypass if they so wish. And so there's currently a connector planned along a Romance Hill Road to connect those. And Washout's well underway with the planning of that going forward. And this is obviously going to be an issue for us going forward. And also, this is done in response to regional development trends. There's just ongoing growth pressures in both Mason County and in Kitsap County, right next door. And so this includes an increased demand for sort of light industrial and industrial park development, which was not something that was really heavily considered in the original subarea plan. And so this prompted us to kind of take another look at the land use patterns as part of our update. So as Kel mentioned in her intro, we've been at this for going on two years now. We began this process back in the summer of 2020 with data collection, gathering information on existing conditions, putting together an engagement plan, which included setting up a private project website, conducting interviews with the major stakeholders in the area. I believe there were several dozen of those identified for, you know, folks who landowners, business owners, local citizens who lived in the area. As part of that effort, we also put out a series of hand-distributed postcards in the area, left those at major gathering places, distributed those to public facilities like the library and grocery stores and things of that nature. And we also opened up a, what we call and receive a scoping process where we allow members of the public, invite them in to offer comments on what they think should be considered as part of this process, what topics they want to see analyzed in the EIS. So that scoping period gathered comments from the public. We also put together an online survey and distributed that out to folks in order to get their input and conducted a vision and workshop with the community as well. And so then moving into the winter of 2020-21, developed the subarea plan and worked on the EIS that was associated with that. The draft EIS for Belfair was published in April of 2021 and was followed by a comment period where members of the public were invited to review the EIS, look at the alternatives that were offered there and provide their comments about which alternatives they supported or things that they that they didn't like. This was followed by a preferred alternative workshop with the Planning Advisory Commission. And as part of the publication of the draft EIS and the public hearing that the PAC held, we also mailed postcards to every address in the Belfair area within the UGA. So every property in the area received a mailer to let them know that the EIS had been published and that there was a hearing upcoming to invite them to participate. So moving into the summer, into the summer and the fall, then we received some additional, some of the comments that we received on the draft EIS prompted us to go back and conduct some additional supplemental environmental analysis. So we started working on the supplemental draft EIS. This was, you know, again, Kim Bowd as part of the comments that we heard from the public, as well as the PAC's deliberations and the comments that they heard at their hearings, and asked us to go back and take another look at some of the transportation analysis, some of the water resource analysis that was done in the draft EIS. And so then in October of 2021, we published the supplemental draft EIS, which you've also had a chance to review, and that had its own comment period, similar to the draft EIS, for folks to make additional comments, send additional comment letters in, let us know which alternatives they supported. And that was also followed by another PAC hearing and additional deliberation. And so the PAC made their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners in December of 2021. And so now we're moving into early 2022 with publication of the final EIS, which looks through all the comments that we received on the draft and supplemental draft EIS's response to those comments and finishes up our CEPA process from that standpoint. When the pub file EIS was published about two weeks ago, there was a fact sheet mailed to every address in the Belfair UGA, similar to what we did for the draft EIS last spring. We're now currently in the process of doing the the hearing and the deliberation for words. So you see, you kind of had a pretty extensive process here. And throughout this process, staff has been providing briefings to this body. So in terms of what the draft EIS studied, the draft EIS studied three alternatives. There's the no-action alternative, which is zoning as it exists today. And then we looked at what we call alternative two and alternative three, which we have some maps of those on the screen for you now. So alternative two is here in the center. The major changes that alternative two would have included includes some amendments to the UGA boundary, specifically to remove a small area here in the kind of in the southern portion of the UGA that's a large parcel state-owned land that's not particularly accessible and doesn't really have any development potential. And then there's an area that would be added that covers the wastewater treatment facility that's currently adjacent to the UGA boundary. The festival retail zone, which currently exists in downtown Belfair, would be removed and converted to mixed use for consistency with the surrounding properties. And then several areas in the UGA that are currently occupied by public facilities would be rezoned to public institutions simply for to recognize their use as a public facility and provide a consistent means for governing those public facilities within the UGA. The other change here would be to expand the mixed-use node that exists, that is currently zoned at the intersection of the SR3 Freight Corridor and the Romance Hill Connector out here. As you can see on the no-action map, there's already some mixed-use zoning in place here. But alternative two would slightly expand that and then provide for additional density of multifamily residential housing around that. Alternative three was a higher-growth alternative that includes the same UGA boundary amendments that alternative two does. It would further expand the mixed-use node out here by the by the bypass. And it would also create a new master plan mixed-use zone here, kind of on the eastern edge of the UGA along the south side of SR3. And this area is designed, would be designed to include a mix of different uses, including retail and commercial activities along the highway, as well as light industrial, industrial park, and potentially higher-density multifamily residential housing to support that area as well. So as I mentioned, after the draft EIS was published, we got some public comment. There was some deliberation by the PAC. And as part of the supplemental draft EIS, we developed an additional alternative, which we've been calling alternative three hybrid. And this is the the alternative that the PAC recommended to the board. So some of the changes that would have that that this includes, it incorporates the map changes. Excuse me, compared to alternative three, there's an area east of Ritter Hill that would be changed back to alternative two. So I'll jump back to the map real quick. So essentially, it's talking about this area right here, which is currently a zone for single-family residential, both under no-action and alternative two. Alternative three had increased this to medium-density residential. But the alternative three hybrid, due to some concerns over critical aquifer recharge zones and will-have-protection areas in that location, opted to leave that area alone as its current zoning. The extent of the mixed-use node at the end of Romance Hill was also kind of cut back a little bit so that it looks more like alternative two. And some additional subarea plan policies were proposed for additional protection of water resources in the area. In terms of code changes that would go along with this alternative, we would be blending the proposed master plan mixed-use with the county's existing master plan process in Chapter 17 of your code. And the public institutional zoning that is already on the books for Shelton would be would be, would be applied to the public facility areas that are identified on this map with some, some minor edits. And then in terms of the planned action, planned action would be applied to the entire UGA to ensure that all development is subject to these mitigation measures, including transportation improvements and utility phasing requirements. And the alternative three hybrid transportation mitigation would include an alternative cost share, which we're going to get into a little bit later in terms of like fees for trips and things of that nature. And would include a provision requirement consultation with City of Bremerton just down the highway. And then there would also be a requirement for planned action projects to connect to Belfair Water District or another public water system as a condition of approval to address some concerns that we heard from, from various bodies around stream flow and impact on groundwater from additional development in the area. And so this is a comparison, the, of the, the different alternatives. So you can see alternative two and alternative three, which we looked at a moment ago, and then on the far right here is a map of the alternative three hybrid. So you can see it's very similar to alternative three, but this mixed use node here along the bypass is the same as alternative two. This area up here, east of Real Drive, also matches alternative two. But the UGA boundary changes, festival retail and the master plan mixed use, those are all the same as the other alternatives. So in terms of the growth levels that we've been looking at for, for, in these two documents, the summary of, of growth by alternative is here in this table in the upper right. So we had a little bit of discussion about this at the, the last briefing that we attended with you. The no action alternative studies a relatively low number of additional housing units and additional population. This is, as we kind of described before, this is due to how the, the county currently has allocated growth to the Belfair UGA in its comprehensive plan. It has a very low. And I think, you know, Lisa has a, has a little bit better handle on sort of the legislative history of how this came to be. But the, the currently adopted growth target for the Belfair UGA is, is quite low. And there's significantly more development capacity in the area than these four hundred and seventy eight housing units that we're showing right here. Under no action, your, your development capacity is actually closer to what we're showing for alternative two. It's, it's in the neighborhood of about eighteen hundred additional housing units that you could fit in that area on vacant redevelopable land under the current zoning. But the no action, we're going with this, we want this lower number because it provides a bookend, and we also wanted to recognize what the county currently has planned for this location in your comprehensive plan. And so this basically represents units that you currently have in the pipeline right now, either going through the permitting process or who, developers who have expressed interest in, in building a residential project in the area. And in terms of commercial space, we follow a similar protocol for that in terms of determining this number. For the other alternatives, these represent sort of a anticipated build out at the densities that would be allowed under the new zoning that we just described. So alternative two is kind of your, your moderate growth alternative where you would have approximately just over eighteen hundred new housing units in the area, which translates to a population of about forty four hundred additional residents. As I said, this is pretty close to the capacity that you have available on the ground right now. And this would also provide up to, up to about one point two million square feet of additional commercial space throughout the area. Alternative three is higher than this, about twenty three hundred new housing units in the area and about fifty seven hundred new residents. A lot of this is, a lot of this increase is due to the new master plan mixed use zone there, which would allow for multifamily residential housing. And you would have a capacity for about one point four million square feet of commercial space. And as you can see, the alternative three hybrid kind of slots in between alternative two and alternative three. It's just a little bit under alt three because of the reduction in those mixed use and multifamily residential areas that we showed on the map. So it's coming in about just under twenty three hundred new housing units, about fifty five hundred population and one point three million square feet of commercial space. So in terms of the associated subarea plan updates, so in addition to, you know, the EIS looking at these kind of, these, these zoning questions and, and the land use patterns in the area, the subarea plan was also updated to reflect this new information on existing conditions. As we mentioned, the original plan was published in two thousand four, so it's, you know, almost twenty years old at this point, and a lot of things have changed. The plan recommendations and implementation strategies have also been updated to acknowledge work that's been completed since the adoption of the original plan. And we've also made some preliminary updates to the plan concept map. And just look, which we've got an example on the right side of the screen here to kind of take a look at how the different nodes of the, of the area would change based on the zoning that we've described. Placing some greater emphasis on this larger node, kind of in the northeast that could occur with the implementation of master plan mixed use zone. Also with the bypass coming through imminently, taking a closer look at this node out here at the end of Romance Hill, and then making some updates to sort of this southern portion of the SR three corridor and recognizing that things down here have changed a little bit as well. The salmon center was something that was highlighted pretty strongly in the original plan, but that has since moved its location. It's no longer within the UGA. And so as a result, kind of reconfiguring this area a little bit in response to that. So this plan concept map is kind of our preliminary update, but this update would be finalized once the board settles upon a selection of a, of a final alternative for the plan. And then the plan would also update its descriptions of zoning districts and land use concepts in the area. Again, once a final alternative has been selected. So as mentioned before, some, some amendments would need to be made to the comprehensive plan and to your code for the sake of consistency after the plan, the subarea plans adopted. So we would need to go through, update some text and figures and a number of tables in, in chapters one, which is the citizen's guide, chapter three, land use, the rural element and the housing element of your comprehensive plan to show a transfer of population allocation. As we've mentioned, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the current plan has a very low population allocation for Belfair. We would need to update your comprehensive plan to show the new population total that would result out of the chosen alternative. We also need to make some amendments to tables and figures and text in the capital facilities element of the, of the comprehensive plan to show that same transfer of population growth and create a subsection of that chapter that talks about capital improvements identified specifically for the Belfair area under the planned action, particularly transportation improvements and any mitigation fees that you would choose to adopt. We'd also need to make some similar adjustments to chapter seven utilities to show that same transfer of housing growth from a rural county into the UGA. And reference the planned action for growth assumptions and plan improvements. In this, in this situation, we'll also be talking about potential changes to need for power. And then any plans that have been incorporated into the transportation element of the, of the comprehensive plan, such as the Belfair corridor study and the capital facilities project list, we'd also need to make some updates to the transportation element to account for those. As we mentioned earlier, there'll also make a few tweaks to your development code in title seventeen. So again, updating the zoning map, replacing the text of the festival retail zone with the mixed use. If the, the board goes ahead with that. We would also want to incorporate the design standards from the festival retail zone into the mixed use zone. One of the things that, as part of this process, even though felt the festival retail zone didn't really make sense to continue in its current form, there was some really good stuff in there in terms of the designs that would apply. We don't want to lose that. So we would recommend incorporating that text into the mixed use zone. And as well as adding some text to the code for the master plan mixed use zoning in the northeast UGA, which would be a new zone. And then applying your public institutional zoning that matches the standards in Shelton to the areas that we have flagged for public facility. So I realize that's a lot of material, so I'll pause there and ask if there are any questions from the commissioners. And, and then after that, I'll hand it over to Lisa and we can jump into talking a little bit more about the planned action ordinance itself.
There's a, yeah, Commissioner, I would go for.
Yes, could you please give a brief description of the difference between the, this, this new mixed use plan zone in comparison to what is, it's currently zoned?
Sure, let me just jump back to the maps here real quickly. So I think this slide would probably show this best. So on alternative two, this is this area right here, if you can see my cursor on the screen, that's currently zoned for a mix of general commercial, general commercial, business, industrial and multifamily residential. This is the area here that would be affected by the master plan mixed use. This alternative two doesn't make any changes to this area, to the zoning in this area. So this is what's currently on the books right now. And then as you can see, most of that area would be converted to master plan mixed use under alt three and alt three hybrid, as well as kind of an extension of the multifamily residential to the south to kind of create a transition here. So again, this is more about these general commercial and business industrial areas. These are more about sort of auto oriented commercial for stuff that's along the highway. You're looking at kind of larger plots of land with, you know, the, right now, your general commercial zone is pretty flexible. It allows for a wide range of things to go in there, a lot of employment based uses and things of that nature. The master plan mixed use zone is primarily intended to keep a lot of that intact. So a lot of those same uses would still be included. But would also allow for some additional flexibility for light industrial or kind of like industrial office park type development as well as allowing residential uses of slightly higher densities to be developed in proximity. Lisa or Kel, is there anything that you want to add there that I may have missed?
I think you covered it well. I think the, the master plan mixed use references the base zones that of general commercial and, and mixed use. And then BI uses are allowed by special use. It's really to get, so the uses are similar to what's allowed today, as Kevin mentioned. It's more about the consideration of the area as a whole and getting common street landscape standards when, when the development comes in.
Okay, Commissioner, is any other questions so far? Okay.
Okay, well now I'll go, I'll hand it off to Lisa to talk a little bit about the planned action ordinance.
Right, thank you, Kevin. And good morning, Commissioners. This slide shows a map of the Belfair UGA as it would be amended with those public areas accounted for. But the idea is that a planned action ordinance would apply to the whole area. So development that, that comes in would be subject to the mitigation measures identified in the environmental impact statement as well as the code requirements that apply through zoning. So this slide just shares some of the high level findings regarding the natural environment that future development would apply or comply with the county's critical area regulations. In terms of land use and aesthetics, applying the existing and amended design standards would address potential changes in intensity and compatibility. For cultural resources, the planned action includes the mitigation about developing a decision tree on what level of, of review is needed. And then for utilities, there was a finding that growth could exceed the current water and wastewater system plans. And so there's a threshold in the planned action that identifies what that threshold is and make sure that before development crosses those thresholds, that there would be additional capital planning. And then there was a requirement added as a result of the supplemental EIS document to require connection to public water. And in the letters you've received for today's hearing that is supported by the tribe. And in terms of public services, there's requirements to coordinate with capital facility requirements for PUD three school district. And and then there would be a consultation process as well. Go on, Kevin. For transportation, the transportation analysis recognizes improvements that have been based on current planning to date. And prior to implementing the improvements, there would be design studies to confirm the, the exact improvements. There's reference in the mitigations to roundabouts. They typically cost a little more than traffic signals. So the planning costs are based on roundabout, but if signals are determined appropriate later, then the cost may be a little bit less. However, they, they have other benefits. Roundabouts would be designed to accommodate buses and trucks. That was a comment made earlier in the process. And it, and the reason why they're suggested to be considered is that they can be safer for multiple modes due to the slowing of traffic around the roundabouts. So in terms of the results, the alternatives were evaluated in terms of the capital needs and associated growth in trips. And the alternative three hybrid was the least trips of the action alternatives. And the planned action ordinance suggests a mitigation fee to help pay for a portion of the planned improvements. And so it's based on the cost of the necessary improvements that are associated with just the growth, not the pass through. And so if some of the fees are adjusted, there would need to be other revenue sources considered to help implement those. So if we can go to the next slide. At your briefings, we've mentioned that other nearby entities charge similar fees as would be associated with, for example, the alternative three hybrid. But at the, based on the discussions, we've also shown what the fee would be at different percentage levels. Should you determine you'd like to go a different direction with, with what the fees are? So there's placeholders in the, in the ordinance in attachment C to fill in, you know, the selection of the preferred alternative, which the PAC recommended as alternative three hybrid. There's placeholders, you know, to select the, the fee and, and to implement it over time and apply those fees towards the improvements. So Kevin, if we go and go to the next slide. This summarizes the various ordinances that Kevin and I presented in the presentation. Your staff report suggested considering a motion following the hearing and consideration of comments, considering a motion to approve and adopt the planned action ordinance and amendments to the comprehensive plan and the subarea plan and development ranks. So they're sort of listed in the order. Amend, amending the subarea plan and comprehensive plan, amending title seventeen in the zoning map and adopting a proposed planned action ordinance. And with that, you would fill in some of the, the blanks by, by your directions. You know, selecting the preferred alternative, identifying, that would then determine the growth numbers, the trips and the mitigation for transportation and then the fee itself and the period of expenditure that, that you'd like to see. So that's everything that we had planned to present. Kel, is there anything you'd like to share?
Uh, no, I think we'll just answer any questions that folks may have.
Commissioner, is any, any questions there? Okay, I do have a question, and this actually goes back to the master plan mixed use and, and maybe I'll direct it at Kel first. So if that's the, if that's what's adopted in, in the alternative that's chosen, what kind of review would go into a permit application for that area? Are there any other special use permit requirements or any other? Any, anything else that would need to, any kind of other review that would happen in that zoning designation?
Yeah, so any commercial or industrial, any non-residential, any non-single family residential development proposals that we get have to go through a pre-application conference with all the different department staff. And then for that zone, if there is a proposal for a subdivision, that that goes through a public hearing process, it goes through the hearing examiner for preliminary plat approval, and then it comes to the board for final plat approval. For commercial development, if there are structures over over the fifty five foot height limit, that would have to go through a public hearing with the hearing examiner to get a special use permit. And also, any structure that would be over fifty thousand square feet would also have to go through a special use permit. So otherwise, the uses would be allowed outright in that are currently allowed in the general commercial and business industrial zones.
Thank you. And then, and so the, I guess, to characterize that, if the zoning has changed, somebody can't go in there tomorrow and break ground immediately and and start building without there being additional evaluation of what they're proposing?
Right, I mean, even if even if a proposal doesn't, like it's under the threshold for going to get a special use permit and a public hearing process through the hearing examiner, it still goes through all the review from staff, building department, planning department, public works to meet, you know, stormwater code, building code, and then all the critical areas for planning, landscaping, parking, lighting, et cetera.
And then on the transportation side, I'll mention two things. One, we also have a representative from DOT on, I think, still with us this morning that that may have some comments as well as part of this presentation. But is at that point, when when a project comes into your office with a pre-application meeting or pre-submital meeting, is that the point in which you're starting to determine the total trips and how an impact fee for transportation would be applied? At what point does that happen? And then where does that, you know, the developer, whoever is doing a project pays that fee? Then that fee goes where?
The impact fee?
Yes.
So depending on the the applicant of whether or not they're prepared with a transportation impact analysis at pre-app level or at submittal, they would be required to, typically, we 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 have WashDOT at those pre-app meetings if it's warranted, depending on the project. And so they're given advance notice as well as the PUD, et cetera. It would be at the time of project proposal or permit proposal or permit submittal that we would require that traffic analysis and determining the trips. And then based on, you know, if you adopt the planned action ordinance, we can actually collect impact fees that would go into a fund, which would then only be allowed to be used for the transportation projects identified in in the Belfair area under this, under the EIS. How that all gets implemented, you know, that's more on the Loretta side of things. But, you know, that would that would move out of community development and then into the public work side. And I don't know the full details on that. But this planned action ordinance actually allows us for the first time to start collecting impact fees for transportation or for the traffic impacts. As opposed to, you know, right now, we don't, we don't have that ability except through the SEPA process. And it's it's not as clear cut on on how on, you know, on how to retrieve those funds.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioner, there's a section of the planned action ordinance exhibit B dash three, the last couple pages of the attachment C that that gives a little direction in terms of what Kel mentioned. It's a mitigation fee. It is collected under SEPA because it's a planned action ordinance, but it functions like an impact fee. So even though it's voluntary, we included some parameters that are similar to an impact fee in terms of saying that the funds would be held in a separate account, that they would be payable at the time of a building permit, that there would be credit given for any improvements that are installed that are based on the need for system improvements in the area. And then there'd be a period of time where the county would expend the funds and that it be part of your master fee schedule. So so we've given some parameters that are similar to an impact fee for this SEPA planned action ordinance.
Great, thanks. Lisa or Kevin, I guess, you know, one of the, one of the, maybe, I don't want to call it a challenge. Maybe I'll look at it more as an opportunity is a lot of the the roadways that are impacted in Belfair are state highway facilities, you know, and I know that there's funding and work already being done on the freight corridor that's anticipated to alleviate some of those pressures, as well as in the the new transportation package that's being worked in the state senate. There's additional money for SR three through Belfair. But what are some of your thoughts or some of the things that you've observed from other municipalities that may be in similar situations where a large portion of their commuters are on state highways where they collect impact fees? What are what are some of your thoughts on on how we would work with DOT to maximize the developer contribution so that we get improvements on both county roads and state highways?
I think Loretta might be able to support some of this. But in terms of other counties that I've seen, there there's sometimes a voluntary agreement between the county and and WashDOT to have developers contribute towards state facilities. It can also be done, I think, sometimes through other other processes. But I've seen that, and so Snohomish County would be an example of of that kind of an agreement. I know that the planned improvements and the costs that we've identified here do not include the state routes that are already proposed for improvement under other means so that we were focusing on any other improvements that were needed for the subarea. I don't know, Loretta, if if you have anything else to offer?
Morning, yes, sorry. Yeah, there are agreements that we can enter into with local programs to plan for the design and construction of intersections that we jointly manage. And also, we work with local programs to identify priorities that are on our list, and that can be signaled on our tip and move forward to implement those those projects. And a lot of that coordination has been happening through this planned action EIS process. And it's been really great to work with DOT, and they've provided very valuable comments during the process to help shape the recommendation you've got before you today.
Great, thanks. Commissioner, is any interest in hearing from Andrew Larson from DOT at this time or?
I still have some questions, but I'd like to hear from him.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from him as well.
My name's Andrew Larson, and I'm the Development Services Engineer for WashDOT's Olympic Region. I really don't have any planned comments. I was just asked yesterday to be here to answer any questions that you might have. But I would like to say, as Loretta said, they have, we have been talking about the potential projects that are listed in this EIS and explained which ones we consider, which ones we would rank the highest, I guess you would say, and what we would support on those. So if you have any specific questions about any of the projects or anything, I'd be glad to answer them. But as I said, I don't really have any prepared remarks.
No, I appreciate that. So just, I guess, just a confirmation from you that if we if we proceed with the EIS and the impact fees that we're able to utilize those in partnership with DOT on improving, you know, both our facilities and yours in a collaborative way.
Definitely, that we'd be glad to work with you on whatever projects that you come up with for the highway to come up with solutions that'll work for everyone.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for Andrew?
Kind of a clarifying, so a roundabout, let's say that the one by Mason Transit. How do how do we work together to make that work effectively for for all of our commuters? Do we, so I guess what I'm trying to say is, what's the maintenance like? So the O and M?
Your question is, what is the maintenance?
Yeah, so I guess I'm kind of going off, maybe down a rabbit hole, hoping not. But so we've got, so the roundabout will have a county road that ties in, right? So how? How is it determined, I guess, how who maintains that little sliver, I guess?
Okay, so that would all be worked out during the design phase of the project. So whoever's, so if it's a county project, putting it together, if it's a developer project, you'd put together a set of plans showing the improvements. And say it's a roundabout, you would show where the, between WashDOT and the county, we'd work out where the proper place for the turnbacks would be. So where WashDOT right of way would be where county, the county road would start. And generally, WashDOT would maintain what is within their right of way, unless there's something specific to the project that WashDOT can't remit, can't maintain some proprietary item or something that the county really wanted, then we might hire some sort of a maintenance agreement for that particular thing. But for general maintenance of the roadway, for just say a roundabout, it would, WashDOT would be the one to maintain what what is in within their own right of way.
And then the county would 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 do the rest. So is that where the impact fees would go? Am I?
The impact fees would be going towards the design and construction of the project would be my understanding.
Okay.
But you're, the other people here might be able to address that better than I could.
Commissioner, we could share the appendix to the supplemental draft had an updated list of of proposals. I could share my screen and show you the projects that were identified. So this was also in the draft but updated for the supplemental draft. But there's a list of intersections or locations where projects are proposed. And then by alternative, which which one would be needed? And there's a a percentage share of trips that are assumed to be passed through and not part of the mitigation fee. And then, and then which one? But where there's a percentage of new trips on that that facility, that would be a share of the cost that the mitigation fee would pay for. So some things that were removed were things that were already underway, like the freight corridor. But there's other roundabouts and intersections on SR three where there's planned improvements.
Okay, no, that's perfect. That answers my question. Thank you.
Sure.
Great, okay. Commissioner, you had some questions?
Yeah, before I do, though, some of them may be in regards to the presentation and others may not. But I don't know another place to add to get my questions other than here. I don't think it fits during deliberation. Are you comfortable with me asking them now?
So let me just, I certainly don't have an issue with that, but I just wanted to check with Lisa and Kel. Does this kind of conclude the formal part of your presentation? So if Commissioner has questions that are a little bit more broad, now would be an appropriate time?
Sure.
And then, so Commissioner, that's fine. But just I also want to mention for the public out there, once we get through some of these questions from the commission, we'll also be taking questions from the public for staff on the presentation that they made. I see Ken, you have your hand raised. We'll certainly get to you once we get through all the commissioners' questions and then move into public questions and comment. Commissioner Evelyn?
Yeah, the last time we had such a huge change was almost twenty years ago. How was the public included in the decision making locally there for for that event? What type of things did we do and present for the public?
In two thousand and four?
Yeah, two thousand, two, three and four.
And I I wasn't here, I'm not sure, but I imagine, you know, I don't know. But I, you know, we we are required by law to do some minimal things, like publish in the paper and do outreach. I imagine the planners here at that time engaged with the community and some local leaders to get the word out. But I would be speculating, but there are some, there are some minimum requirements as far as publishing for getting notice.
Yeah, well, Kel, you presented in your presentation, your original presentation that you gave us in the paper form, you showed the different forums, the public meetings and the public forums that were held in those documents that you sent to all of us. So we know that some of that happened or?
In two thousand and four? I I don't, I don't.
That's right, if you don't know, I just thought you would because it was in your original presentation of paperwork showing pictures of it all happening. So how many, how many public forums do we have regarding this event that we're working on now? How many public forums or open houses do we have up in North Mason regarding these issues?
Well, in March of two thousand and twenty, I believe, is when we ended up shutting down for COVID. And then since then, we haven't had the ability to, or, you know, when we started the process, we didn't have the ability to meet in public. So we did hold forums and workshops virtually over Zoom and Teams, I think, Microsoft Teams.
Okay, well, I know we had our our mobility plan on public. So but and even still now, so now who usually pays for rezones of a property?
Either the county or individual property owners.
The county usually pays for people's rezones?
Excuse me?
You're saying the county usually pays for people's rezones?
No, either. So if there is a, like, this is a, you know, subarea plan of Belfair. So this is a county action. But individuals are also allowed to apply for rezones on their property. And we typically get about five, six, seven per year.
And who who usually pays for EISs on their properties? If they get, if they're going to have a large construction, they want to have some type of environmental impact statement, who usually pays for that?
Well, if there was a project proposal from an applicant that required the SEPA environmental checklist and staff determined that it was a determination of significance and we required an environmental impact statement to be prepared, the applicant would do that.
Okay.
But under, when we do our comprehensive plan, you know, major update or the initial comprehensive plan update or the subarea plan, that also has an environmental checklist. And we, I don't know if an environmental impact statement is done in Mason County for any of the comp plans, but for example, City of Shelton, when they updated their comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, they did an environmental impact statement and they paid for that.
Okay, so now there's some zoning changes stuff and density increases. Did we offer the same free rezonings to the other people in the urban growth area?
During the scoping, people were allowed to make recommendations. We have a letter that came in before the PAC as well as to the commission for the River Hill area requesting the rezone from R four to R five. That was in the alt two hybrid or no, it was in the alt three. Remind me, Kevin, I think it made it in alt three, but then in the alt three hybrid, it was taken out. Staff supports that that change from R four to R five. The PAC didn't, you know, the PAC, when they made their recommendation to the board with alt three, they just did it. The PAC didn't, you know, the PAC, when they made their recommendation to the board with Alt three, they just did it as proposed. They did not include that request. But that's something that I would support and encourage the the board to consider. I don't recall that there were.
There's one other one.
Was there? What was the other one?
Festival retail. I think we had some comments from.
That's correct. So the festival retail was also, I believe Judy Scott made that recommendation. We had also talked with a landowner regarding long term agriculture and if they wanted to keep that or change it into something else and they opted to keep that. So that there were multiple property owners that have the ability within the Belfair urban growth area to recommend zoning changes.
Now, I I noticed you mentioned a couple of the stakeholders when you're having that conversation or where that information came from, but on your list of stakeholders, it was very small from that that region. It looked like so it was maybe five that actually lived there. Or actually, I don't say live there, had the properties there that were on your stakeholder list. But my question.
Beginning of the process, when we were putting the stakeholder list together, I did include you in that and you were, you did send me this, the list of stakeholders that you wanted included and and those people were included as as well.
No, I appreciate that. What I'm talking about is how many other ones are there in there? You've got hundreds of other properties, right, with different people throughout the the UGA at the bare minimum. Only two more questions. Another one is I requested and was granted a mailer that went out to inform the public in Belfair of some of the changes that are occurring and on there on the mailer. Am I correct? Only hybrid three was included. Was there any other information sent out to them regarding the other options, one, two, or anything else?
No, it just showed the preferred alternative, alternative three as as recommended by the planning commission.
And when did you put the EIS alternative three up on the front page of the county? For the public to be able to look at and find?
The alternative three that was originally, the Alt two and Alt three were originally published in April of twenty twenty one. And then the Alt three hybrid came out in the supplemental draft and that was available is it October of twenty twenty one? It was published in October of twenty twenty one.
Well, my question is, when did you put it on the website for the public to be able to look at? I have a date here, February eighth, when you put it on the front page for the public to be able to view.
Well, it's been on the the Belfair project site since April and then in in October.
The Belfair project site, where would the public find that?
Mailer they received?
Yeah, we we published the website on the postcard that we handed out and then the postcard that we mailed and then on the the two page flyer, the website address has been on on all of those.
But for the public wanting to do it, the only thing they had recently, especially for this hearing, was put on there on the eighth, correct? Because other than that, you had to go in and put EIS to find it. I had to myself. That's what I have. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Trust, any questions?
No, I think I will wait until after our constituents and interested parties have questions. Let them go first.
Just just maybe a follow up on one of Commissioner Nellin's questions. So when it comes to determine who pays for an EIS like this, how would you bill, since this is a UGA wide EIS, would do you bill every member, every property owner in the UGA for it that way? Or is this typically when a municipality does a subarea plan and a UGA wide EIS, is that a is a public benefit and a public cost?
That question directed to me?
Could be. Anybody that has an answer?
I mean, in my experience, I I think when jurisdictions do planned actions, they're paid for by the jurisdiction or through grant, perhaps a grant through Department of Commerce or Ecology. I've worked on a planned action in Tumwater and it was through an ecology grant.
Kel, that's my experience as well, that that typically the jurisdictions that are coming up with the proposal, you know, pay environmental review. It's it's possible to have property owners pay when permits come in, but it's I've not seen it in the twenty something years that we've been working on these.
Okay. And then I guess when we determined, when Commissioner Nellin requested the flyer go out and we agreed to do that. Do you recall any of the conversation about how we determined to only put the hybrid three on there? I believe that was commissioned and requested based on the planning commission's recommendation. Is that is that your recollection?
Alternative.
I actually don't recall. I'd have to watch that. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
I was gonna say, alternative hybrid was, that was the preferred alternative selected by PAC. So that was essentially what had been moved forward from the draft, draft and supplemental draft EIS process to the final EIS. So essentially, that's what the the final alternative, or excuse me, what the final EIS refers to as the preferred alternative, because that's what the PAC recommended. However, we'll mention that the the mailing list for this mailer and for the postcards that went out for the draft EIS is the same. So at that point in time, when the draft EIS was published back in April, the full EIS included no action, alternative two and alternative three as well.
Okay. And then typically, you know, the question of rezones came up. Are are rezones common in a planned action EIS, especially one that is UGA wide like this? And then to be clear, just from my own knowledge, to be clear, we've received at least three rezon requests and we've generated one on public institutional, including a reiteration in an email letter to us from River Hill requesting the RR four to RR five rezon that staff is supportive of. So there are multiple parcels that are going to be rezoned based on the scoping request?
Correct. And the planned action under the SEPA law and rules is associated with an action like a like a subarea plan or comp plan amendments or development regs that it goes with those sort of legislative processes. That's that's what it's designed to do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, appreciate that clarification.
One question, I forgot.
Sure, Commissioner.
So there is a process. And there's a process that Mason County has to follow along with the state. When they, when they do when we do an EIS or look at the UGA boundaries, did we follow their guidance? And and if we did, or if we didn't, why, why not? And if we did, did you exceed? I know normally you do, you go way above, but did we go over and above? What was that required by law?
Yes, the the State Environmental Policy Act doesn't require a public hearing. It requires comment periods and we had those and and by issuing the supplemental with a comment period, we added more opportunity for comment. Under Growth Management Act, the minimum is a single hearing. And the PAC had three. And the board is now having one. And and then to do those additional items during the written comment periods, like during scoping, the the scoping meeting, the survey, the stakeholder interview process, all that is above and beyond what's required.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions from the commission, we can move into questions from the public. Again, just a reminder, best way to get my attention is to use the hand raise feature on on the reactions at the bottom of your screen. We'll start with hands raised on questions for staff on the presentation. And then we'll move into public comment. So I see one hand raised at the moment. Ken, go ahead with your question.
Thank you, Commissioner. I I had a question for Mr. Larson of Warshot. He mentioned that Warshot had ranked some of the transportation components of the subarea plan. Is that ranking available to the public?
It wasn't a formal ranking. We we just that when we were presented the projects, we said which ones we thought would have the best impact onto the highway. And that was basically the roundabouts at SR three and Clifton and at SR three and three hundred. And sorry, what?
Why would, how about the roundabout at the Roy Boat Road?
I'm not, that is that, that's not on a highway, is it?
It's on part of the, it's on part of the subarea plan.
Right. But I mean, as far as comments from Wash Dot, we would would just be commenting on ones on the highway.
Oh, pardon me, I I guess that's a county road.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Thanks, Ken. Next up, we have Linda, Linda's iPad, I see on there. And then following Linda, Jason Freeman. Linda, go ahead with your question.
Yes, thank you. My question is, I mean, it's been very interesting and I appreciate the fact that we are getting much more information about what's happening as far as growth, the growth plans and things that a lot of us in Belfair don't feel we really have access to. So this is really nice to be hearing all these things. But I was on the meeting for the for the sewer presentation and appreciated that. I have a question that someone asked at that point, and I'm hoping it can be answered here. Because what I think I understood is that that traffic that is going to come down from the very large multi use, single family development above Les Schwab and the post office only has an exit onto SR three right by McDonald's and Les Schwab and or whatever that was, Napa. And so my question is, everyone, everything that you've been talking about talks about traffic mitigation, who's responsible for it, what's going to happen? That all takes effect while you're making all these plans. So can you explain what is going on with that? Because I've also heard that there is no exit from that housing development anywhere but coming down to that intersection. And if that's wrong, I'd like to know that and just know what's happening. I live, I will just preface this by saying that my husband and I live on the North Shore and on Hood Canal. And so although we aren't right in the Belfair community area, we certainly are part of the Belfair community and we definitely are, you know, involved with the traffic issues and everything else that goes on. So thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Kel, do you, I don't know if it's more appropriate for you or Loretta or Andrew, but maybe all three of you.
I'll jump in here, Commissioners, if that's.
Yeah, Kel's, you're muted.
Muted.
I saw you go and talk.
All right.
Thanks, Loretta.
Sure. Andy Larson may also have a little bit more to add to this. So to answer your question, the traffic that is anticipated for the Olympic View and Olympic Ridge development is going to trigger the need for some improvements at Ridge Point Boulevard and SR three. And that is one of the projects that is listed and included for and calculated in a mitigation fee. So we've got this list of capital projects, the estimated cost to make those improvements. And one of the things that Commissioners will be considering today is what's that traffic mitigation fee that would then pay for those future improvements?
Can you explain what some of the options can be for that intersection? Because it doesn't look like you could put a roundabout there very easily. I don't know, but it looks like the best you could do would be to put in a traffic signal. I mean, I come down that road now without all of those houses and people that are living up there. When I go to the post office, I try to decide when I'm going to go so I don't get into, you know, a bunch of traffic coming down the highway. So what, what, has there been some conversation around that?
Yes. And what's identified in the the plan here is a single lane roundabout. But as you heard earlier in the the testimony, it's possible that that could be a signal. That's something that as we get to the design phase, we would be working closely with Department of Transportation to see what is the most effective improvement there. But the the single lane roundabout is the preferred alternative and as noted, is probably likely to be the more costly. And so that's used for a conservative estimate in this.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have Jason Freeman, followed by Brenda Hershey and Judy Scott. Jason, go ahead and ask your question. I've done, if you unmute yourself.
I apologize. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work in trying to improve and maintain the quality of life. I'm a resident of Belfair and impacted by the freight corridor as as our house is off of Romance Hill. I am kind of new to the process, so please forgive me if I'm asking a question out of ignorance, but I don't see a whole lot of information in the parks plan. And please, maybe you can direct me to where I can find out information about a green belt providing biking and running paths as part of the the SR three plan and and the sewage. If that line goes through, heading north. If if we have any plans to include a green belt that perhaps would be paid for and provided by the developers, as that certainly enhances their economic outlook to have those types of things for the community. And in past areas where I've lived, it's always raised the quality of life and and the property values as well.
Thanks for your question, Jason. Lisa or Kevin, do you have any comment?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words and then Kevin, maybe you can pull up the parks map in the subarea plan. But the 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 subarea plan does identify parks and trails in the subarea and including, you know, associated with new development. And then the planned action ordinance does have a measure to ensure substantial consistency with the subarea plan, parks, recreation and open space plans. And it provides for a voluntary agreement process, a fee in lieu of onsite recreation so that the county could determine the best use of that that fund. So that's in attachment C around page seventy nine, we have we have that planned action requirement. So Kevin, you can show there the landslide area is the open space sort of where it's environmentally sensitive, that would be retained as an open space where it says P one. And then P four are the neighborhood parks and regional parks that are shown conceptually. And then there's trail. Trails noted, the trails are identified in the zoning code requirements, and then the parks are referenced in the subarea plan and then the planned action.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, next up, we have Brenda Hershey, followed by Judy Scott. Brenda, go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a question, I have a couple of questions, Commissioners. One is I think we can all agree that the past two years have not been normal times. With many of us learning to use Zoom and participating remotely as we are now. My question is, how many folks participated in, I'm talking just not the, not the members, but just people who participated in the PAC hearings? Do we have any idea of what kind of attendance there was for that? the uh PAC hearings. Do we have any idea of what kind of attendance there was for that?
Yeah, I think um, I don't have any exact numbers, but that I could, you know, go back and and find that out. But our initial Zoom meeting that we had in November of twenty twenty, we had close to twenty folks. It was in the teens, uh twenty participants that were non um county staff or non uh uh consultant staff. Um, and then through the the other meetings at PAC, we'd, I would say less than a dozen at a time and different folks that, you know, participated all along the way, or some just, you know, a meeting here or there. Um, but Kevin, do you have the number of people who sent in written comments? Cause I know you had to.
Yeah, I'm pulling that right now. Uh, I think I'm, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm working on pulling that right now. You're correct. I was pulling up the um, the summary that we wrote up for you on the that that community meeting in November. Um, and you're right, we did log uh twenty community members who attended that. Um, you know, in addition to county staff and um, I believe all three of the commissioners participated and members of the planning advisory committee, that sort of thing. Um, I can, yeah, I'm I'm looking for um the exact number of people who sent in written comments. I could probably have it for you here, here in a minute or two.
Well, while you're looking, could I ask, is is this fairly normal? Was that, was that a normal uh participation that you would have expected based on past experience?
Uh, for in in my tenure here in Mason County, it it seemed like we had good participation um in in the process. Uh, and I know, you know, people emailing and reaching out, uh, it seemed like the the normal amount.
I I have, uh, Commissioner, may I ask uh an additional question, or am I allowed only one?
Oh, no, you're 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 fine, Brenda, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm I'm learning here. So what precipitated this? What made you decide to to revamp this?
Um, I was uh tasked by the commission in twenty, early twenty twenty to draft an uh request for proposals to um hire consultant services to draft an environmental impact statement or to draft the planned action environmental impact statement um for the Belfair UGA. Uh, in my understanding was at the time, it was based on the fact that Wash Duck was moving forward with the planning of the freight corridor and had uh had pretty much determined its location as well as um the county accepting um uh some loans to to extend the main sewer line.
Okay, okay. Then that brings me to um my my last question that I have here. Um, when when you talk about the um mitigation um charges that are proposed here for transportation, um, that's one area of infrastructure that is um of concern and and it and appears you have uh taken that into consideration and are 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 um building into the process uh a way to mitigate that. But my question is about how, how are we going to, how are we planning to handle? Um, the, like, i- if you were to put in uh an additional more than two thousand um residences or businesses, I'm assuming that translates into ERUs. Would we, at that point, if that were the chosen uh alternative and uh that it were to uh progress in uh to that extent? Would we be, at that point, we'd have too much effluent? Because when I do the numbers, it seems like we're getting pretty close to about half of the daily amount. So would the sewer then need to be expanded? And how does that fit into all of this?
Yeah, the EIS does look at um triggering points for when the sewer uh would need to be expanded. And I believe they um, it's uh Lisa, you explained it, that there's, it it sets early so that we start planning for it in advance um for the sewer expansion prior to the development, you know, maxing it out. And then we don't have, you know, any uh, any um, any capacity. But so that that it is, it is worked into uh the environmental impact statement.
And likewise for the schools?
Schools, um uh, how did we address schools? I know that plant uh proposals need to coordinate with schools on impact fees. Um.
Right, we we anticipated the potential number of students generated in the homes that was disclosed in the EIS and made available to the school district to review. And then the planned action ordinance um indicates that planned actions shall demonstrate consultation with the district and ensure adequate capacity. And if there's a lack of capacity, the county can condition development uh to provide for uh its fair share, the development's fair share of new capacity.
So then, just to wrap up here, the comments that came in, uh, I think you were looking for that, Kevin.
Yes, so uh the, so as I mentioned, in addition to, you know, this, this is just written comments that we received um on the EISs that were published. Um, I don't, I don't have a a record at my fingertips of the number of people who offered verbal comments at the meetings, but we received uh thirteen written comment letters on the draft EIS. Um, and then when we published the supplemental drafts, uh, a few months later, with the additional analysis, we received four additional comment letters. Uh, two of those were from folks who had already commented on on the previous, but they were um fresh comments. They had, they had other things that they that they wanted to say, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Shudy. I appreciate your um allowing me to ask these questions.
No problem, great questions. Okay, next up with questions, uh, just I have Judy Scott, Kim Wilson and Lisa Renfro. Uh, Judy, go ahead with your questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Shudy, I appreciate it. Uh, this is although, you know, I re- I recognize that you have done some outreach. It is noted that these past two years have been pretty unique, being in lockdowns. And and as a previous chair for the North Mason Community Voice and being a part of the commission for Port of Allen, uh even some of the commissioners said they'd like more information about this EIS process and rezoning. So my question is, would you wait before you make any decisions today? As I would like to to get like probably a a public forum. Um, as you know, even if those um flyers that went out, it was probably, I'm not sure, was it just in the UGA area? Or was it farther reached? Because as you know, uh, the Belfair area outreach is many other communities and participate, you know, in effect with Linda and and thank you for Brenda for bringing this up too, is that we need some more information. And I'm not necessarily opposed to all of the rezoning, but um, I think we have a lot more questions that need to be answered. So would you please, um, is it possible that you can delay your decision today? I guess that is my question. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Judy. Um, so let, maybe Kevin and Kel uh can discuss the mailer. And then I would just say, in terms of the decision, um, we're gonna go through public comment and commissioner deliberation. And so we'll, we'll see what the decision is on that, once we get through those portions.
Uh, the mailer was sent just to the folks within the UGA boundary.
Um, and then Judy, I guess if if you had other questions, if you had them now while staff is with us, you feel free to ask another question if you have a follow-up that goes beyond um the mailer.
Well, I don't at this time, but thank you.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that. Uh, next up, I have Kim Wilson and then Lisa Renfro. Kim, go ahead with your questions.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. So with the rezoning to the um multi-use, does that allow both um multifamily and single-family dwellings?
Kel or uh Lisa or Kevin?
I'm sorry, I have to admit, I got distracted, unfortunately. Can you ask that question again, Kim?
On the um rezoning for the multi-use, does that allow both multifamily and single-family homes?
Oh, um, you know, I don't think it requ- it allows single-family. Let me look that up real quickly.
And while you're looking that up, in regards to the roundabout proposal right there by McDonald's, um, you know, I was coming from Bremerton yesterday and I got to just pass the first roundabout by Peninsula um landscaping. And it was four oh five. And it took me until four twenty-five just to get to Romance Hill. So it's not, there's, there's a lot more going on with Highway three. And the traffic currently, um, just putting in a roundabout there, it's not we, we got some real issues with traffic going through Belfair. Is, is this all this change in development, is the corridor gonna go through before we add all this additional traffic? So that's my second question.
Um, if I, I'm happy to try and tackle that one, Kim. And Andy, you can jump in and correct me if I misspeak on schedule, DOT schedules. But the the freight corridor is planned to begin construction in twenty twenty-four and is anticipated to be completed in twenty twenty-six. So you will see additional traffic coming from the projects that are under construction now. And um at the same time, we have several projects along the the SR three corridor that have been identified for funding. And I believe Commissioner Shudy mentioned the transportation package that the legislature is considering right now. One of those projects that is included in that package is the Phase Two SR three widening. So that's the um stretch of road that um is just around the Feller Center and the school and continues south to the one oh six intersection. The planned action EIS also includes language about as new development occurs along the SR three corridor, that we will work in coordination with DOT as part of conditioning projects to look at the opportunity to combine driveway accesses or eliminate driveway accesses. That's one of the things, Kim, that's adding towards the delay is that you've got a multitude of of driveways in and out to all of these um properties adjacent to SR three. So that would be one way to help with that um, that delay that you see. And Andy, maybe you could speak to um some of the the priorities that we've been reviewing with DOT in terms of improving mobility through the the existing corridor.
Um. Well, as as I said, we talked about those roundabouts, which would help out, especially for mobility, the one at Old Clifton where there's currently a signal, because that seems to be the main bottleneck that causes backups is that signal. So if if that roundabout were to be installed, that would help out some. Um, I'm not sure what else.
Let me make a comment on that.
Oh, Kim, can you, would you mind holding your comment for the public comment period?
Sure.
Okay.
So still waiting on the answer of the multifamily and single-family.
Yes, so that would be um the, for currently, the way the master plan mixed use zone is written is that it allows all uses that are currently allowed by mixed use and by the general commercial zone. Um, and neither of those zones uh allow single-family residential. Um, however, I, I think it is important to point out, though, that most of the area, most of that land that would be zoned uh master plan mixed use um is currently zoned general commercial. Um, so single-family residential uses are not currently allowed there uh right now.
But with the rezone, they would be?
No, they would not.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
But I just want to clarify that it does allow um townhouses and a multifamily, just not the single family residential.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Great, thanks, Kim. Uh, next up, I have Lisa Renfro and uh Jason Freeman. Lisa, go ahead with your question.
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm just, I agree with Randy about having a a public in-person meeting, that that will be in person per se with the maps visual, not on Zoom for the thirty-first scheduled public, next public hearing that you're discussing.
Do you have a, do you have a question?
Yes, um, yeah, the question is, is that meeting that you guys are gonna be voting on today going to be in public, not on Zoom?
Um, n- not sure what meeting is on the thirty-first.
Oh, the hearing, sorry, the hearing for the Belfair.
The one on March first?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's uh, that's gonna be like our other meetings, it's gonna be on Zoom. Currently, the uh county is in um is beating on Zoom.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm just learning how to work the Zoom and I haven't really read any of the documents or any of the paperwork um proposing or fees or costs. I think maybe the people are more concerned with the cost and and looking at that to wonder, you know, is it something that or a place they would like to move to? Um, even if you don't live in the UGA area and you didn't get one of those flyers, there are people who are looking to move and might want to um know or understand before they decide if they want to move, you know, in that area. So that's sort of important too, to have the meeting because or other investors too. So, so I think that would be a great idea if you guys did. I'm, and um, my other question, sorry.
Sure.
Is um, is the reason why they didn't put number two on the pamphlet is because that other um what they took off, that's not going to be a part of the UGA. Is that why they didn't put it on there? Because I'm trying to keep up with the pictures in the map on Zoom, so I'm not quite sure why that was. But that was my only.
Yeah, so I guess I, I, you know, like, we, Lisa, that's a good question. So, you know, I, what we mentioned earlier was when we discussed the flyer, the briefing at Commissioner Netherland's request, um, the consensus then was to uh go with the uh Planning Commission's recommended alternative three information, but also have a a space on the flyer to call out uh where you would find information on the other alternatives.
Yes, so um, my question is, which map, one, two or three, had the the original plan with the UGA that is not now going to be included? That they took off and excluded. So out of those three options, um I didn't have time to look at all the maps. So, so, yeah, that was my question.
I'd be happy to share my screen again, if that would be helpful and and bring the maps back up and and try to get at least an answer to her question. I I guess, I I'm trying to, I'm just trying to understand though also, um, are you specifically looking for which alternative doesn't modify the UGA boundary? Or I guess I just want to clarify exactly what what you're uh asking, uh, what you're looking for, Lisa.
You know, past McDonald's where they said they were going to have that part of the UGA or or wherever they said, oh, well, that's not gonna be a part of the UGA anymore. We took that out and um, but it wasn't really crossed off on the map. So I didn't know, comparing that to your chart in one, two, three for zoning, you know, I, I'm more of a visual person, so I, I'm like, well, which one was that?
Okay, I'll ha- I'll have it, uh, give me one moment here. I'll have the maps back up on the screen. And uh, we can, okay, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear about, um, okay, so the uh, the draft EIS. So those are the maps that I have up here. These were the original alternatives that we studied um in the draft EIS. Um, so the no action is on the left, that's the current UGA boundary and the current zoning that are on the books right now. Um, and then And then alternatives 2 and 3 in the center and on the right, those are the two that were studied in the original draft EIS. And what went out of the mailer is the old 3 hybrid, which we can get to in a second. But these alternatives show the modifications to the UGA boundary kind of down in the south that we mentioned with the, the public land and then adding, expanding the UGA to include the sewer treatment plant. But it doesn't sound to me like that's what you're talking about. Is there another location you're specifically asking about? Because these are the only modifications to the UGA boundary that were studied in the, in the EIS.
So basically, that other map that they're not considering, that addition, isn't a part of these maps or a part of the chart for rezoning for 1, 2, and 3 on is no action, is no action number 1 and?
That's correct. We could, sorry, it's, it's no action and the EIS refers to it also as alternative number 1. So, sorry that that wasn't clear.
So, so is that the map that had the extension that's not going to be included or the UGA that's not going to be a part of it that has been excluded? That they re, that they took off in the, in, it was on another picture prior to this? Because you can't really see the maps on the computer very well, so I'm trying to compare what the other maps to this map, like, okay.
Sure. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm having, I'm struggling to kind of just make sure, I'm not entirely sure which, which map it is you're referring to. Let me.
It was earlier in the meeting when they were showing that this is not going to be part of the UGA area.
The state, was it the state land and the, and the Belfair sewer facility?
I believe so. Yeah, it was bigger, it was more visible than these. Yeah.
Give me one moment, I think I might have a map that will, that'll, that I can pull up here in a second, that'll give us a better look at that. I'll just have to page through a couple of documents here, but I think I can get us a better view. Okay, so this is from the, this is an alternative 2 that showed up that we included in the supplemental draft EIS. And so this is, I guess, is this what you're talking about? This is the expansion to include the wastewater treatment facility here outlined in solid red. And then this dashed red is the area that is currently in the UGA but would be removed because it's state land, non-developable. Is, are these the locations you're talking about? I apologize if I'm not, if I'm not understanding correctly.
Different maps, so I can't really compare to, I'm not great at, I would sort of have to put the two maps together to, to really see if this is the same. But I think that, that was it, that it's not going to be included in there. I thought, well, that's nice that you can make the maps bigger so we can see what you guys are talking about. That's really, I can see this now, yes.
And so then this is.
Just was wondering what the controversy was about why number 2 wasn't submitted in the second flyer or, or on for consideration? Is that because of that? Any exclusions from, any zoning?
So those two, those two areas were, so as part of the scoping process, and Lisa and Kel, feel free to jump in if they, if I missed something, but during our, during the scoping process, there were some, one of the things we kind of talked about, we went, we went out for the public engagement, we asked sort of like, hey, what, what do folks think about changing zoning within the UGA? And then also opened it up a little bit to, are there any areas that you think should be included in the UGA that aren't, or areas that are in the UGA that should, that should come out? And there was some discussion about several different areas to make some changes. Those two locations, the wastewater treatment facility, which is right here, and then this kind of corner down here that's state-owned, those were brought up. There was some also, there was also discussion about potentially removing some area up here in the northwestern corner of the UGA. And several folks had made some comment about like, hey, well, this area maybe doesn't need to be in there. And at the end of the scoping process, what we, we elected to move forward with making the, the adjustments on the bottom because those seem like they would not have, again, being a public facility and being undevelopable land, there wasn't really going to be any effect on the county's ability to provide services or it wouldn't affect your, your development capacity in the area. This area up here in the northwest was a more complicated question. And there was, because this year, a lot of this area has already been developed to, you know, near urban densities, removing that area from the UGA raised some questions about provision, you know, about provision of service. And the idea that there was already sewer infrastructure eventually planned for that area. And so there was that we kind of deferred to say that that would be, if the county wants to remove that from the UGA, that would probably require some additional study with a scope of its own, rather than being done as a part of this process. Lisa or Kel, do you have a additional ideas on that? Those are the only areas that I'm aware of that where there was like serious discussion about making amendments to the UGA boundary. And if that doesn't, if that doesn't address the area you're talking about, I, I apologize, I'm just having a, a hard time understanding exactly which location.
So then you're saying that what was presented for people to look up on the EIS through the flyers shows this with that excluded? Or not?
The, the version that's on the flyers, which?
So again, I think, if I could, if I could just jump in real quick.
Sure.
So I think on the flyer, again, the, the decision of the map that was put onto the flyer is this Alternative 3 hybrid map, because that was what was approved by the county's Citizen Planning Advisory Commission. And I, I think the conversation was at that point, this is the preferred alternative that, that they're recommending. And so the hope was that we would get comments on that, get additional comments on that recommendation from the Planning Advisory Commission. However, also on the flyer, it noted the other alternatives in the maps that were available online.
I haven't, sorry, I haven't looked at that yet because I just got finished with the four-hour meeting yesterday because it took me three days to go through that, to try to understand it. And Marty was really nice to help me with the definition, so I wouldn't be asking more questions. So, but I do have a few more, if that's okay.
Yeah, just if, if we could just quickly go through those so that we can get to other folks.
My other ones will be for comments. So I'm assuming after listening to the other meetings that some people may be misconstruing or saying the word hookup fees when the meeting's about capital improvement fees or capital improvements. So, so it's a little bit confusing for everyone, so I was hoping that in the meetings or in the charts attached with the maps, the prices for hookup fees, are those going to be set fees? Or is that going to be circumstantial, depending on where and how far they need that extension? I think that was for the extensions for the next phase. I don't know.
Related to the, I'm sorry, Lisa, related to the sewer system?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so that, that, you know, it's like, oh, we're going to be charged an impact fee this, just to hook up, but, but her impact fee was something her, her, excuse me, her hookup fee was not an impact fee, so I thought you guys already had impact fees. So I was really confused, but I learned a lot from talking to Marty, so and learning, you know, how these meetings can be confusing when everyone's talking and using abbreviations. So I don't know what R-E-E-F means, and when they're talking about reef and the other word with the, the, this other word that means something else, pincato or so, so yeah, we don't know. So it'd be nice if you guys could say the word instead of the definition for us people who are trying to learn and understand what's my suggestion. And then I do appreciate that you guys are having this, and I'm appreciating that they have the UGA because a story, a story about our neighbor who was behind us raising our children had 10 acres and he only had two cows. But, you know, I called Tim Botkin and I said, well, you know, I'm on water and well and septic. And, you know, how do I know if the cows are going to affect our, you know, our systems? And he said, well, it just depends on, it depends on where it goes, where it wants to go, and the only thing you can do is test your water every year. So that puts a big expense on a person. And so that gave me another question saying, well, would it be possible for, is, is there going to be a mitigation process for people who already have a septic in a well, who are near or close or in the areas or the expanded futuristic areas? So they could put in for mitigation to keep their septic and well if they test it and if they clean it and the public health? So they don't have to convert when they sell their property per se, or, or make it so people have to test periodically or clean periodically if they don't sell to ensure environmental health. And so that gave me a question to say that wasn't answered about, is this for public, is this for the public? Is this for public? This expense or this expansion or, or the sewer system, is it for the public? Well, it really is if it's for the health of the people and what it could do if they didn't have it when they had growth. So essentially indirectly and to not have consequential problems with your neighbors, I'm, this is a good thing. So I just wanted to say.
Great, thanks, Lisa. Appreciate those questions. I also, I see hands up now from Jason Freeman, Ken Van Buskirk, and Brenda Hershey. So Jason, do you have another quick question for us?
Yes, hi, this is actually Lynn Stevenson, I'm Jason's partner, and my concern right now, also in this, this goes with what Kim was saying about traffic. We live in the Romance Hill area and that area, and we noticed that on November 8th, 2021, that somebody is trying to permit at the top of Romance Hill Road and Air Castle, where there's only that one road going up, a 91 single-family home development. And I'm very concerned about that because, you know, there's one road going up there and so yeah, that's a big concern of ours, since we live, you know, off of Romance Hill Road. The continued traffic, the, the encroachment of, you know, because currently it's like an open space area that's filled with trees and everything out to the railroad, and now 91 homes, that's very scary to me.
Do you have a question or?
Yeah, my question is, how do we comment on something like that, that we really are concerned about? Because it's obviously part of the urban development plan to have something like that up there, Romance Hill Road near Air Castle.
Great question. Kel?
Yeah, so we did have a pre-application conference. I did not, I didn't, wasn't in attendance, so I'm not sure what the outcome was. But the applicant has not submitted a subdivision proposal yet, but when they do, or if they do, it would be a, it would be required to go to a public hearing with the hearing examiner and there'd be public comment and testimony allowed at that time. And you could also inquire with the staff about the subdivision and what the requirements are.
Okay, and where do you find that information about when the hearing would be? Is that on the assessors page or where do you find?
Well, it will be posted on site at the time, so you can, it would be posted on site, it gets posted in the paper. We have a hearing examiner website that shows when the public hearings are coming up and what the public hearings are. We, the hearing examiner meets on the first and third Wednesday of each month. If there are hearings scheduled, so you can watch the hearing examiner page. You can email me at K Rowen, K R O W E N, at masoncountywa.gov. And I can send you the link to that hearing examiner website.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you, that's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thanks, great questions. So, Ken Van Buskirk, go with your questions and then Brenda, we'll get to you after Ken.
Thank you, sir. Two quick questions. Mr. Gifford just talked about the original scoping document that showed removing part of the northwest corner of the UGA. I commented on that to the SEIS. In the response I received, there was that the county has longstanding plans to sewer the old Belfair Highway. They tried that 10 years ago, is that still in the county's current plans? I guess the Reddit would be the best one to answer that.
I'm slowly jumping on here, Kim.
Thank you.
So in our general sewer plan, it does encompass the entire UGA. So at this time, yes, we are still considering that as a potential area to be sewed.
Even though you tried 10 years ago and it didn't, it got pulled from consideration?
Sure, it, it did.
Okay, that's, thank you. I just wanted to clear that up. My second question was for Kel, wasn't the Port of Allen included in the original distribution list? Of the EIS and the SEIS?
I believe so. I'd want to go check my list real quick to confirm, but I think they were on our.
I just, I heard some com, I heard some comments that they weren't aware of it, and I just wanted to make sure that they were included in the original distribution. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ken. Brenda, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, real quick question. The briefing that Kevin, the briefing charts Kevin used today, were those, were those provided to us prior to the meeting today, or is there some way we can find those?
A version of the slides, similar slides were shared at the Board of County Commissioners briefing on January 3rd. And, and then prior PAC meetings, Planning Advisory Commission meetings, there would be that information. Back to the question of the Port of Allen, Kel, I did check the distribution list for the draft EIS and the supplemental, and the Port of Allen is on there.
So I have a follow-up there. So where is this information readily available? That a citizen could have found this? Because I'm back with Lisa. I, Lisa's question about the maps and how that all fits in, it's really difficult on a screen to sort that out and to understand, you know, so having just seen that today, if you weren't, if you weren't caught up, or you hadn't been involved in this process all along, you would be, you know, how, how would you find this? It kind of goes back to what Commissioner Netherton said, you know, that it's so hard to get this information, and because we're all, you know, remotely connecting, how, how would we have done this? I'll leave it there.
There is a project website on the, if you go to the, it will now, it's, you can find the link at the home, Mason County homepage that will link you to the Belfair project site, and then all the documents are listed online there.
As, as well as in the briefing packet for, or the meeting packet for today, the information is there. Okay, any other, any other questions? I don't see any new hands up for questions at the moment.
Mr. Chair, before we go to testimony, we're at two and a half hours, can we give everybody a five-minute break?
Sure, so I have 11:29 on my clock right now. Commissioners, if there is no objection, let's plan to come back at 11:35 and continue the hearing at 11:35. All right, everybody, we will, we will come back into our hearing on item 10.3. We've concluded the question portion of the public hearing, and we'll now move into public comment. Before we begin on public comment. Before we begin on public comment in the room, Mackenzie, do we receive any written correspondence? And will you read off the names and folks that we've received correspondence from if we did?
Yes, we did. We received public comment from Cheryl Bradley, Marissa Byrne, Courtney Flora from McCalla Hill Dairy, Eric Hammer Bay from Spox and Island Tribe, Lisa Klein on behalf of Jack Johnson and Steve Johnson, the owners of River Hill Properties and Clifton Heights Properties, Brad Carey, Jack Johnson, Michael Siptra, Diane Hartley, Marilyn Corrigan, Judy Scott, and Brenda and Dean Hershey. And then I do have an email from Brad Carey that he requested to be read into record.
Okay, so all of the, all of the items that you received are going to be recorded into the record?
Yes, I do have those available online, but it looks like Brad requested it to be read.
And is that the only one that was requested to be read out of that pack?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, any objection to having that read into the record? Okay. Mackenzie, go ahead.
Brad writes, again, I reviewed the proposed EIS and support its approval as it works hand in hand with steering managing the increased growth in North Mason and has been and continues to experience. I believe in the GMA and its effort to reduce urban sprawl. The proposed EIS places, manages and provides infrastructure growth exactly where others and I would like to see it occur. It is important to recognize our county has planned for growth in this area for many years. And it is extremely critical to approve of both the EIS and Belfair sewer extension sooner than later. Because the longer we drag this already vetted process out, the greater risk we have of losing the opportunity to manage the growth with affordable infrastructure because landowners will not wait to develop their property. Once they start developing their property, the opportunity to place the infrastructure utilities will become cost prohibitive and managing growth as described in the proposed EIS will become impossible. Next, last Friday, when we spoke for about 30 seconds, you explained to me that you were in favor of the growth in the north end of the county, but that you wanted the utilities, like the sewer extension, to be placed along the state proposed freight corridor, right? I see several problems with that plan. Number one, growth has been and is happening right now and the value in acting now in order to steer growth, reduce costs and provide relief to current sewer ratepayers more than offsets trying to run the utilities three to four years from now down a proposed freight corridor. What if the state decides to change delay or not even build the corridor? Then what? Next, you also refuted my statement that the proposed Belfair sewer extension and other utilities running north through Overton's property would not only manage residential growth, but also manage commercial growth and generate sales tax revenue for the county. Here's my question for you to answer during today's EIS hearing. Is our proposed EIS filing limited to just residential dwellings or is the land zone also for commercial activity that would attract businesses that would collect and pay sales tax revenue to the county? I already know the answer, but I need you to publicly state what you told me Friday or make it clear that commercial zoning is also included in our EIS and our GMA slash UGA plan. It looks like that's the end of that one.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Again, just we'll move into comment from folks that are on the Zoom meeting now. Again, best way to get my attention is to use the raise hand feature. For our public comment period, we were a little liberal on the time constraints with the question and answer period. But in order to make sure that everybody that wants to make a comment can make a comment, we will adhere to our public comment policy time limits, which is roughly about three minutes per person. And again, as I always say, I don't have a stopwatch and so I'm going to, I'm going to trust you to try to keep your comments concise and on topic in the three minute period. If it's running beyond that, I will guide you to, to wrap your comments up. And then we'll get through as many folks as want to make comment today. So here's the order of folks that I have so far. First, we'll have Lisa Renfro, followed by Kim Wilson, Lisa Klein and Brenda Hershey. Lisa, go ahead with your comments. And if you want to unmute, Lisa.
There, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead with your comment.
Commissioners, there was a question about revenue and for these projects. So when I was talking on the phone to not Marty, the other guy, sorry, I'm a little nervous talking, but and they were talking about excise tax and everybody is paying excise tax for the project as the whole community. And that's how it's being paid now, to my understanding. I recalled the Senate Bill 5096 and I'm thinking, oh, that was for excise tax. And then I looked into the bill and then unfortunately they changed it that it wasn't going to be for excise tax. So I thought maybe you guys could have utilized that for revenue. But unfortunately, it's an income tax of some type that's going to fund the schools for education, for education. But then I was reading more about that and it said that 20% their enrollment is down 20%. So my comment is if people and legislation, it's just an idea that I had, could present something to Ensley about, well, what about the revenue they're not using or they're not going to use? Because if they could use and convert it or put it back to excise and then it could be allocated for not just one thing, but to help with protecting our environment because that's, you know, he's all about global warming, right? So if this is put on the county that we have to do this or we're not going to be able to allow people to build or get grants, well then, you know, so we're under their rules. So are they going to help us and how? And that was my suggestion.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate your comments. Next, I have Kim Wilson, Lisa Klein, Brenda Hershey, and then Linda, another Linda again. Go ahead with your comments, Kim.
Sure. I just wanted to comment about the roundabout that I think Andrew Larson had mentioned proposed for Clifton and Highway 3. And I would highly recommend that somebody from DOT actually put boots in the ground, on the ground via a vehicle coming from Bremerton arriving in Belfair at approximately four o'clock on a Friday afternoon. That traffic light at that intersection does not interfere with the flow of the traffic, in my opinion. If you look ahead, you'll see that, and it's not the driveways that Loretta said, it's the off streets. It's the courtesy of the drivers that stop and let everybody in onto the highway, which backs everybody up. You've got the elementary school that is releasing at four o'clock in the afternoon. And the highway is backed up from 106 all the way back up. And it's not that traffic light that is backing up the traffic. It is, it is everything beyond it. So I just wanted to put that out there and recommend that they actually don't do a traffic count. They actually experience what we all experience in Belfair. And I did want to also comment about the county being more transparent with constituents and their public notices. I agree with several of the other people that have made comments about those of us in the north end of the county not getting the notices and finding out about this. It seems like the 11th hour to get our input. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Lisa Klein, Brenda Hershey, and then Linda.
Good almost afternoon, everybody. Thank you for your time. My name's Lisa Klein. I'm a land planner with AHBL. And I'm speaking today on behalf of Jack Johnson and Steve Johnson, who own two significant assemblages of property in the Belfair UGA. And we did submit comments that are there for the record as well. But essentially what we want you to hear is that last fall, when the hybrid, alternative three hybrid was published as the preferred alternative, we provided comment to request that alternative three be approved. And the difference being between the two was that the River Hill properties specifically were shown as in the alternative three, medium density residential and in the hybrid, as it is today, single family residential. And there's some very good reasons for it to be upzoned to the R5 medium density residential. We presented that to the PAC and it felt like it just kind of went very quickly without real consideration of those reasons. And so if you would, please give it that consideration. Some of the things to note is that with the location of the property and the cost of extension of utilities to the property, it really needs to have a higher density in order to be able to afford those extensions. Also, one of the reasons for the property being proposed under the hybrid is R4 that was given at the hearing was that there's a greater potential environmental benefit to be R4 because it's in the wellhead protection area. And I would argue that the opposite is actually true because we would need to have public utilities extended to the property. And to be able to afford to do that, you need the higher density. And that's how you get your wellhead protection is through the public utility extension. Lastly, one of the key goals that we read at the onset of this project was for, is for reviewing transitions in zoning, transitions between zoning. And if you look at the hybrid zoning, you've got on the east, or excuse me, on the west side, single family residential, then you've got a block of medium density residential. Then you get the River Hill properties, which are now back down to single family residential, lower density. But it's right next to business industrial. So that's not a real, that's not a real transition that's happening there. So we're requesting that the county commissioners, please consider the River Hill properties for the medium density residential zoning. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thanks, Lisa. Next, we have Brenda Hershey, then Linda, Judy Scott, Marilyn Corrigan, David Overton and Jeff Carey. Brenda, go ahead.
I'll be real quick. I'm just asking that you take a pause here. Hold a public hearing. I think public participation is essential. And that, you know, we have the maps laid out so that just as, it's very difficult to understand what changes are coming without being able to point to and ask about. So I'm just, I'm just encouraging you to do that. You know, I know Commissioner Schuie, you said that it's been two years, but it's been really two years that have been so strange with this pandemic. So I just ask your adding a bit of pause here and just give folks time to absorb this. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Next up, we have Linda, followed by Judy Scott, Marilyn Corrigan, David Overton and Jeff Carey. Linda, go ahead with your comments.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that have come up just about the traffic flow. It feels to me like it's very, when we start these housing developments, they can go up really quickly. But then dealing with the traffic conditions and things that we're dealing with now take a lot longer. So I agree with Brenda when she says boots on the ground and people trying to maybe put something that they know is going to take a little bit more time to work out or really adopt. That should be happening well in advance, I think, of people being able to build those housing developments. So, and I also would say that I, it would be great if we could have more time and more input on these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next up, Judy Scott, followed by Marilyn Corrigan, David Overton and Jeff Carey. Judy, go ahead with your comment.
Yes, I'd like to offer my services to get ahold of North Mason Community Voice. They are still in existence to see if we can have a public forum, if you'd be willing to do that. If you would contact me, have somebody contact me, I'll see if we can make some arrangements to get more boots on the ground information to the communities and the surrounding communities around the UGA. So thank you.
Thanks, Judy. Appreciate that. Marilyn Corrigan, go have your comment.
Yes, I have two comments. One is just reiterating that we need a broader communication than just the UGA people. I think it's all the people that go in and out of Belfair every day. Allen, Greater Belfair Union even, to know about these things, not just the stakeholders right in, right in town. And then I also put a shout out to the timing and the coordinated development. I think it's great that we have a plan. But things like that have been mentioned, like if we need a roundabout at McCall's, we need to be working on that right now because there'll be people in those apartments in a couple of months. So and the corridor not coming for four years is ridiculous. Anyway, thank you.
Hey, thanks, Marilyn. David Overton and then Jeff Carey.
Hi, good morning, commissioners. We can still say that as it's just a few minutes before noon. I wanted to rise in support of the commission taking action today. We've participated in a little bit over two years of this process. This, I believe, is my fourth or fifth hearing on it. And many of the same people that are testifying today were participating in those hearings. So to provide the community with some assurances that there's a timeline going forward, I'd encourage you to take action and have thorough deliberation today. Submitted a letter regarding some of the public participation that we went through and it's fairly exhaustive. It certainly rises to a higher standard, which I think is appropriate than either state or your own county regs require. So some of those meetings, the scoping hearings, the PAC hearings that revised the agenda, as well as the commission hearings and deliberations, as well as all the briefings that went through the county commission were all informative to the process. I am very COVID compliant as much as I can be and would not feel comfortable in a public setting. So I encourage the county to still follow its protocols or to change its protocols if it's going to depart from that. I also rise in support of Lisa Klein's comments. She made some points that I think are very relevant. That urban development requires utility extension. And I think for the sewer extension that you are proposing, that having more hookups is a better thing. And this is one of the properties that would be serving or served by the extension that you're considering. I think her point about wellhead protection is also on point that you don't want septic systems in an environmentally sensitive area. So either Alt 3, which would include that, or the planning commission's recommendation of all three hybrid with some modifications. But it looks like Alt 3 would be the cleanest adoption. And I applaud the staff on going through this process. It is difficult times. But when they've been asked, they've doubled down and increased public awareness and support for this project. So it feels like a very robust process. I also sat on the 2004 process for the first severe plan and the ones that predated that. And these mimic prior processes. I know there were some questions about what those looked like. But as, as a member of all of those prior processes, going back to predating GMA, this has been the most robust. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeff Carey. Jeff, go ahead with your comment.
Yes, thank you. It's always amazing how everybody calls, but it's your turn to go up. It's always amazing. Anyway, I reside between the two urban growth areas, Allen and Belfair. I've been involved since 1997 with various aspects of community planning in the area. And I got involved as a result of, because of the Allen sewer and zoning. So here we are again, 25 years later, same things, deja vu. My concern is, I support, you know, the planning, development. My concern is I support, you know, the planning, development. I have no hangup with any of the landowners developing their property. My issue is that it seems like we since I've been involved since the beginning, it seems like we do not comprehensively look at the capital facilities requirements and look at really what the impact is on both the existing citizens as well as the new citizens coming to our county. So my, my concern is after all these years, always the capital facilities portion falls short from my viewpoint. I concur with you, Commissioner Shudy, that after two years, this would be the only place where government moves to is moving too fast that two years. At the same time, you know, I don't want to inadvertently adopt something that's going to, you know, create problems for the community as a whole or the landowners or, or other residents in the vicinity. During the last two weeks, since just before the sewer presentation, I've reviewed most of your briefings that dealt with this. Some of the PAC meetings, both the audio and the minutes. I watched the 12 six pack or I mean, I listened to the 12 six pack meeting on the recommendations. I've discussed this with a couple of the commissioners. I've discussed it with staff. I've even discussed with Mr. Overton, you know, my concerns and what have you, and I understand his concerns. So when I say things, I'm considering a lot of these, these points. But my position is that the EIS and the other document, these documents are not really ready for adoption. If we're going to use this as the final guidance of what we do. Case in point, you know, I sit on the transportation improvement, yeah, tip cap. Until this last meeting, none of these things were brought forth to tip cap. My concern on that is, is that with the transportation side is that you have impact fees and I'm not sure they're the right fees. As an example, the last item on your spreadsheet is dealing with the roundabout at the south end of the Belfair bypass. I don't quite understand why that's in, as a component of the, of the impact fee. Likewise, there are two projects that are in your six year tip that are on that list. That list has more than I can't remember, at least about a dozen projects at least. There's only two that are on the six year tip. And the two that are on the six year tip do not match, the numbers are not even close to the numbers in your, in your documents that you're reviewing and approving today.
Jeff, do you want to?
Pardon me?
Can you start wrapping up your, over the three minutes?
Yes, okay, well. I guess to sum it up is take water rights. I look at what you got going and I look at what Mason, you know, Belfer Water has going. It looks like to me we're exceeding the water rights capability. If we're trying to pound for population, we don't have water rights. What's going to give there? I mean, water rights are getting harder and hard to acquire. Another thing on, you know, on the, on the, one of the projects, there's a missing project on those transportation ones, and that's the one at Belfer Street. You have zoning to the west of it. Multi-family on 22 or 23 acres. You know, that's, you know, doesn't necessarily mean it'll develop that density, but that's, you know, 2200, I mean, 220 dwellings, that's quite a bit of little traffic, either going out the North Shore Road or the, the Belfer Street. I guess, you know, it's always hard to sum these up in three minutes or less, but the other part is, I mentioned earlier, like, okay, so where in the plan is the capital facilities for the parks? So I guess what I'm trying to say is this, in summing it up. There's a lot of things we can do. I don't think it should take any longer. What I think is we should have more accurate data and get these decisions laid out. Because to me, you can make, you could easily resolve this in a month. But you need to have these factors in there. Otherwise, we're making this, in my opinion, blind. And in the end, we're going to be SOL. One last thing, the, these plans are supposed to use Office of Financial Management's population numbers, predictions and forecasts. And I, the county needs to consider the fact that Washington State 2019 grew at 115K. OFM numbers say in 2021, they grew at 59K. US Census estimates, they only really grew at 33K. Where am I going with this? I'm concerned that we're, that we're overbuilding. It seems like this is how we got into trouble with the other two sewer facilities in the past is we tried to estimate where we went and we always overshot. And we didn't pay more and build more as we go. So I know that's more than three minutes, but I appreciate that concern and I would like you to take those facts I present to you and use them for consideration. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other, any other comments? Go ahead and raise your hand. Or if you're unable to raise your hand, unmute yourself and I'll sure recognize you. Any additional comments? Lisa, I see that your hand is raised. Do you have an additional comment or is that still raised from earlier?
Oh, no, sorry.
Okay, no, not a problem. Seeing no other hands raised, I'll ask one more time. Is there any other public comment? If so, unmute yourself and state your name and sure recognize you. Okay, hearing no additional comment, I will close the public comment portion and move to Commissioner deliberation and or motion. Commissioner Nolan.
Mr. Chair. First, I want to make clear a couple of things. One, on the EIS itself. I was, I was definitely in favor of the EIS and still am. It's just some of the aspects of the EIS that there's questions on. For history, one of the reasons why we looked for an EIS was not brought up and that was the idea that supposedly Amazon chose above us because we didn't have an EIS in place, environmentally impacted. With that being said, you know, I could see how it's important to have it so that builders can come in, know what they need to do in order to, to move forward. I don't have an issue with that. I'm not even sure I have an issue with most of the stuff that would be the changes. The issue I have is more with the idea of how we've gone about this and where we're going with in regards to our public and our community and those that we represent. You know, Mr. Overton made a statement that this was robust like 2004. I was there also and it's not even close. And the pictures that you will see in the presentation, that's what I was bringing up early, show all the people around tables, not one table. Tables filled the whole bottom of that room at the church for just one of them and they went over and over and over again. The participation was huge. And this is the biggest change since that participation occurred. The impact here is exponential on the community regarding density and population. And to ignore that would be a real, real shame because the impact it's going to have on their lives can be exponential as well. I agree that we met the letter of the law. That's not at issue here. Whether or not we met the letter of the law for, for being able to pass something is one thing. But we did not meet our responsibility, in my opinion, as representatives of the people, to talk with them and to have meaningful back and forth between them and between staff and them. So they could even understand what we're talking about and give us their input. Wanted us all to remember, this is their community too. We can't just ignore the people that live there and what they would like to see for their community. Somebody needs to sit and ask them. And meeting with a 20 people or 25 people, and it wasn't near that many for the stakeholders. You're talking to a few people, you're not persons, you're not talking to the people. Eventually here, we should have been talking to and we should be talking to the people. It's not too late. There is no drop dead date on this where if we don't do this today, all heck breaks loose. It's a choice that's going to be made here at the commission level, whether just, in my opinion, shove it through or go back out and allow the people that live there and the people that live around it and drive through it, the 20 plus thousand people that go through it a day to have some type of interaction where they may be able to understand what's happening. Now, we had a meeting yesterday where it was decided that this would continue. It was sad to me because it was stated that we would have a meeting, that this would go back out to the people the week before. And things have changed. Now I thought about trying to make a big public thing over, you know, being Valentine's Day. I think it wasn't appropriate just to try and ram people through because they need to be educated to this, not just ran here to show them that they're not being heard or they're not being paid attention to. We had a lot of emails during the last public hearing that spoke about the traffic and the impacts and what impacts that growth will have up there. We've had emails on this one as well. We have open meetings that are happening all over the place now. Where we're also sending staff. I, I attended two meetings in the last two weeks in the public in North Mason where 70 people attended these meetings. They were open to the public. It was very informative and things were working back and forth and there was information going back and forth. There was county staff there at both of them. With that being said, you know, to say that that's an issue now doesn't even make sense. There's different ways of doing things. It doesn't have to be like a town hall that we just had. It could be an open house where you have three, four trestle boards and the community gets to come in and ask staff about the questions on them. So they can get up to date information on what these things mean. What did number one look like? What did number two look like? What does number three, what does number three alternative hybrid look like? Without that, again, we're going blind. Jeff Carey made some incredible points when it comes to the transportation and getting the numbers right. That's been my issue I've had with some of the stuff we've been doing all the way through. We're not doing all the work that's necessary to get where we need to go. Once again, the impact on citizens just can't be overlooked and be considered to be nothing. And I appreciated the comment that, that when we had our when the, they had a, the open time for a comment that they received 14 comments on such a big giant issue as we're about to be voting on. I get 14 comments when I get, go for a gallon of milk at the store. It is literally, it may be great and it may meet the letter of the law, but it does not meet the letter of our responsibility. And with that, it may not go anywhere, but I'm going to move that, Mr. Chair, that we tabled this for 60 days to allow the public an open house. And in 30, you know, in 30 days to allow for that open house and then come back 30 days later after we've taken in their information and send everything back to the tip cap and, and such. So we could have a good, open discussion with all the people that are interested in this and all the people that will be impacted on it. So again, that's my motion is to table it for 60 days to allow for and, and create a public open house. And take it back to our committees to give them their, their input as well. Take in the information and come back at the 60 day mark to actually vote on this with full understanding that the public's been involved.
There's a motion on the table to, there's a motion to table this for 60 days. Is there a second? Hearing no second, the motion is, dies for lack of a second. Is there additional commissioner deliberation?
Yeah, I just want to make a few comments. I have so many that I'd like to make, but I'm gonna reserve that for another time. When we're talking about the transportation, and I am so thankful that Andy is here with us also. But also, Andy made comments back in June, and a lot of it, some of them were on the freight corridor. And one thing that intrigued me was he said the freight corridors anticipated to be T3 carrying 300 to 4 million tons of freight annually. That's a lot of traffic that will be diverted from the, the three to the corridor or commonly known as the bypass also. That will help with traffic? Am I saying that that's going to solve it? No, no. Adding three additional lanes in Tacoma, that, that didn't solve that traffic issue either. So I think that there's, there's going to be a lot of growing pains. My concern and the reason that I really want to move forward with this EIS is so that we can help to decrease or to show where urbans brought, we don't have urbans brought, where this is where we want the growth. This is where it makes the most sense. It's gone through this, the, the processes, the steps. And as far as it being a COVID year, and believe me, this is, I've lost some good friends because of this, because of COVID. And do I want to put more people in a situation that we don't need to? I don't. Do I think that COVID has stopped people from participating? I don't. I don't think that it, that it has because COVID has given us the opportunity to do many of our, our meetings virtually. Which gives them, with briefings, they weren't televised. They were just black and white letters on the paper. But now we can have people watching and it's recorded and people, if they don't have time to watch right now, they can watch for four and a half hours tonight, grab a bowl of popcorn and a glass of wine. But I, I think it's given us the opportunity to be more transparent. Past two months have been kind of interesting for me. I have been attacked. I've been accused of doing things that I've not done. I, there's, there's been a lot going on and many meetings that were considered private were not private. And I found out about those meetings and about the accusations during those meetings. Disappointed? Yes, absolutely I am. Does it affect my judgment? No, it absolutely does not. I am, I've always been supportive of Mason County, keeping Mason County rural. There's a lot of bills that go through the legislature. I testify on them. I send comment because I want to protect Mason County. I want to protect Belfair, Shelton, Union, Matlock. I love Mason County and I love the people that live here. So I would moving forward, I'll stop and get, I'll get off my soapbox. But what I would like to do is I know that there are three different motions that we need to make to make this EIS a lot. A a path forward. Let's, let's go with that. And so what I, what I would like to do is talk to bigger brains than mine so that we can make sure that the motions, if I make a motion and I agree with what they're suggesting, I would like to make those so that they fit the different areas that we need to hit. So kill with that. I would like to ask you to help me with some motions to move forward.
Sure. Yeah, and Lisa or Kevin, if you could pull up that, the last slide, sorry about the traffic behind me. The last slide in the presentation has the the different items that would be voted on. And we could start with that. There's still some things that need to be considered if you're looking to make a motion to move forward and adopt these things. And that is, one, there was the zoning request from R four to R five. So that would be whether you're looking at adopting the alternative three or the alternative three hybrid with the zone change. Or just one of the alternatives without the zone change. And then the other is about the mitigation fees for, for traffic.
I would like to, the motion that I would like to make is, is to accept the the hybrid with the zoning changes. So the R four to the R five on the River Hill property.
Okay.
So is that a, is that a motion that's on the table or are you still uh Commissioner Trask asking for staff input?
Yeah, no, if that motion works, I'll, I'll stick with that.
So you're moving to adopt uh proposed planned action ordinance uh with alternative with the alternative three hybrid with the zoning amendments from R four to R five at River Hill?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so that's the motion. Uh, is there a second? Uh, I will second that motion. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just a uh again, just the idea that this is going through without uh more actual public input, I will be uh standing against it.
Okay. Um, I didn't have a chance to really weigh in on any of the deliberation, um, but I will uh uh just say that I'm very appreciative to staff for working on this internally. I know that this is um, it's been a big lift for staff and I'm also really appreciative to our folks, uh, our consultants at at Burke. And you know, I I look at this as a, an opportunity for Belfair to uh grow in a more sustainable way, to grow in a way that uh helps um growth in a, in a managed way. Um, one of the things that we've heard throughout this process has been um that there are definitely gaps in um, you know, tra- uh, transportation infrastructure and that there are needs uh that need to be addressed in terms of uh traffic flow and patterns and we need to build out that infrastructure and one of the reasons that I am supportive of this and and that we'll get into it when we set the um, when we set the traffic impact fee is that we'll have an opportunity to uh, you know, have development pay for development uh in that regard that we'll be able to have uh, a clearer path for uh developers to contribute to uh traffic mitigation. And I think that's a pretty significant step forward for Mason County, but in particular of Belfair UGA. Um, this is uh something that I mentioned in our briefings yesterday that I've really had to rethink and change my position on uh based on public comment uh as well as the the documentation that was put together as part of the planned action EIS. Um, and so I am, uh, I think that this is a a prudent decision for the urban growth area. I think it's a prudent decision for Mason County. Um, and so I I do support adopting the alternate three hybrid with the zoning recommendations that were uh made by staff um for the River Hill area. Uh, any other discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes. And so there needs to be uh, two more motions, correct?
Now we need I'll go ahead.
I think then to go into, so with that um the zone change and the all three hybrid, it does bring, you know, that that allows an additional fifteen dwellings uh and fifteen more um transportation trips, which you know, would be captured by the mitigation fees. That actually brings the overall transportation cost per trip down to forty eight ninety three from forty nine fifteen. Um, so perhaps now is the time for you guys to discuss the um, I understand from, from a couple of different commissioners that uh, you're not interested in charging the full cost per trip, but perhaps a percentage, so.
Okay, is there any discussion on a traffic impact fee or mitigation fee uh or motion?
Mr. Chair, I'm a, I again, I'm gonna have the same argument and won't be uh uh voting to the positive, but if you do uh approach a fee, I hope you will also consider putting it at the end uh when uh going for uh when finishing the permit and going into occupancy to be able to allow for developers to pay for it, uh, not upfront, but at the end uh and be able to recoup their fees to allow them to be able to work within our system better.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, well taken. Um. Commissioner Trask, any, any other comments or motion?
Could not say that. I don't feel comfortable going with the forty eight ninety three. Um. I would say if we're going to do a fee looking at, could you bring up? Um, Kevin, if you could bring up that other chart showing the fees and what? Um, there we go. Thank you. So from Ritten P SIC, they did twenty percent. So if we did twenty percent of the forty eight ninety three, where would that bring us?
Was that twenty per, were they doing twenty percent of the cost of construction?
My understanding is they did twenty percent of the the cost of system improvements that were due to new development.
And so that would be the forty eight ninety three? Is that correct?
I, I believe so. Um, it's also a fee that hasn't been changed in about ten years.
That has been or hasn't been?
Has not been changed.
So I, I guess I would, you know, my, my comfort level um is uh, the twenty percent of the forty nine eighty three is an odd number at like nine hundred and eighty bucks, nine hundred and seventy eight dollars. Um, I think an even thousand with a escalator uh of five percent annually would be prudent uh to keep us competitive with our neighbor directly to the north of the county line. Um, and I do agree with Commissioner Netherlands uh comments about um having that fee paid upon occupancy. If uh that was accurate, Commissioner Netherland, am I capturing that the right way?
Yes. On, it's not actually on occupancy, but on the
Issuance?
Yes.
Okay.
The issuance of occupancy or permit, where they, where they're allowed to occupy. So this way they pay for it on sale, basically, if you're selling a piece of property.
Gotcha.
That makes sense.
Correct. Uh, Commissioner Trask, is that a, is that amenable?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Um, perhaps a little bit out of order, but uh I would, I will move uh that we adopt a traffic transportation mitigation fee of one thousand dollars with a five percent annual escalation uh payable upon uh issuance of an occupancy permit.
A second.
Okay, uh, it's been moved and seconded to uh implement a one thousand dollar transportation mitigation fee with a five percent escalator annually uh payable upon issuance of occupancy permit. Uh, any discussion?
I still think that people should have a say. But I will actually be voting in favor of it.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, any comment?
No, I, I, I think it's great that all three of us are having a conversation and agreeing, so.
Okay. Uh, with that said, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, and then so then we go back to um the remaining uh ordinance adoptions or amendments, rather.
Oh, um, if I might, there's um Commissioner Shudy, there's one other link to fill in the planned action.
Okay.
Um, which is about the period of expenditure. Um, under CIPA, you can spend the funds you collect under any amount of time. Um, we uh wrote in a paragraph that a would have the county voluntarily try to spend the funds within either ten, fifteen or twenty years um as a way just to, to uh spend within a a reasonable amount of time and and track it. Um, it's up to you whether you wanna put a period of expenditure or not. Um. It, it CIPA does not limit that, but we put that in there as a transparency measure. Um, so twenty years would match the life of the plan. You could also pick ten years, which is similar to an impact fee or something in between.
Okay, um, Kel, do you have a recommendation?
Uh, I do not. I would ask Loretta if she has a preference.
Bear with me. Sorry, it took a while to unmute there, commissioners. Um. I think the the longer period of time might allow us some flexibility to make sure that we round up the funding necessary for these projects. We're um collecting twenty percent of what we anticipate to be needed for the projects. And um, yeah, I would, I would recommend the longer timeframe. We can certainly include in our six-year tip and in our transportation long-range capital improvement program those projects so that they're identified and clearly tracked. And we would be tracking them also um along with the annual budget if we create and establish a new fund for the um, for these impact fees.
Okay, so just to be clear, Loretta, you're recommending the twenty-year period?
I am, commissioners. We could certainly work with something less, but I believe the twenty-year will provide more flexibility.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, any, any comments or observations on that?
It'll be just an exercise, whatever you're doing, because at uh, at that rate, you're gonna need a thousand to get to a million in order to actually build a project.
Hmm. Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, no, I, I, I would follow staff's recommendation and go with the twenty years.
So I, you know, I guess, I guess my concern with that is probably similar to Commissioner Netherlands is that twenty years is a, is a long planning horizon, um especially when we know we need to have mitigation um in the, in the more near term. Um. You know, I, I, I don't know, ten years is, I mean, ten years is almost like the blink of an eye anymore, but um I, I almost, I like that aspect of being able to use it as an impact fee in that sense where we're able to um, you know, really go after projects um but would be willing to maybe split the difference at fifteen years um is also outlined by uh the documents.
So can you just add, Loretta or Kel or or Lisa, can you answer a question for me? So if we if we have projects and we can go out and we can get grants for these project projects and we need a match, would this be the um, would this be used for that match? Or maybe Mark or Jennifer?
It, it could be used for match, Commissioner, yes.
Okay.
And it could also be used, we could certainly spend the, the, the funds sooner than the ten years or fifteen on pre-design and intersection improvement analysis in conjunction with DOT.
Well, I would be comfortable making a motion to go with the ten um, the ten-year. But that probably, probably need some extra words in there, but.
So the um so we determined the fee and then the period of expenditure, Commissioner Trask, your motion is to make the period of expenditure ten years?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I get.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded to uh set the period of expenditure for the traffic mitigation fees uh for a period of ten years. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The motion carries. Okay, next item. This would be uh amending the Belfair subarea plan and comprehensive plan? Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And Commissioner Shudy, that would be um amended by the zoning as you amended for the planned action.
Okay, so a motion to amend the Belfair subarea plan and comprehensive plan uh per the zoning identified in uh alternative three hybrids with the recommendations from staff.
I'll second.
Okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to amend the Belfair subarea plan and comprehensive plan uh with the associated zoning changes in alternative threes hybrid as well as the recommendations of staff uh regarding the River Hill area. Uh, any additional discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, no uh undertaking uh as great as this should be taken lightly and should not be done without further discussions with the community uh to really truly gain their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any additional discussion?
I would like to just quickly um thank Lisa Klein for bringing this forward and bringing it to our attention as well as staff bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in face, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Uh, then our final uh item is amending Title seventeen in the zoning map, which is Attachment B. And uh Lisa, is this also um we also need to call out the zoning changes that were adopted initially with the alternative three hybrid?
Correct, Commissioner, and and I would say the little adjustments for the fifteen dwelling units we're, are gonna get carried through all of the documents wherever a number is provided that relates to the fifteen units, we will be cleaning that up as well.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Okay. Uh, is there a second? I will second uh the motion. It's been moved and seconded to amend Title seventeen in the zoning map uh consistent with the alternative three hybrid uh and recommendations of staff. Is there any additional discussion?
It's the same uh for the record as my earlier discussions, that anything so great as this should be given an opportunity to go directly to the people and let them have a conversation of it uh especially up in the North Mason area. Uh, so with that, I'll be standing against.
Thank you. Any additional discussion?
At the very end, I would like to stay, say, say something, but.
Um, I think we're at the very end. Uh, well, we're at the very end of, we're at the very end of this. We still have more meeting to go through, but.
We do, we do. Well, then I, I, I would like to take the opportunity and to thank everybody that that contributed, including the schools, emergency resources, um responders, um Burke Consulting for their many hours, staff for their many hours and probably a few more gray hairs. And everybody that has participated now and that I'm hoping will will watch us in the future and make sure that they're aware of, of things that are in motion. Um. I think it's important that we have community input. That's never been something that I was ever against. And so I look forward to moving forward with um this and with more projects.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just echo the thanks to our staff. Um, I think they've done a tremendous job trying to navigate a complex uh set of planning uh items, um as well as our, our consultants at Burke uh who are, in my opinion, second to none in the state when it comes to doing planned action, environmental impacts statements and um I think the, I think the issues that were raised um throughout the process, uh, I think they did a good job at trying to incorporate those into uh the documents that were ultimately adopted today. Um, when we received public comment um about items in the plan, um, we were responsive to those and and I think today's adoption of those uh amendments to the code uh show that we're willing to listen and take feedback that is presented um and when the, where the plan can be improved. Um, it was, it was an interesting process, uh given some of the other outside challenges, but um I think today you heard some mixed votes from the commission who uh, you know, we, we do understand the need to be able to um manage growth in particular in, in the Belfair urban growth area. Um, and this is a step in that direction. Uh, and certainly, you know, I, I've, I've said this a number of times when we've taken uh Uh, and certainly, you know, I've, I've said this a number of times when we've taken, uh, when we've taken action on other elements of, uh, planning and land use, uh, throughout the county, but also in Belfair and you know, the matter, the fact of the matter is, um, if we're not gonna have growth within the, the urban growth areas in our county, uh, where does that growth go? Because I do think in many cases, growth is inevitable and um, we've tried to be responsive when, uh, there have been, uh, issues raised, Commissioner Netherlands, um, wanted more input and wanted to do the flyer and we did the flyer. Um, and we tried to get people involved through that way, uh, as well as, as other venues, whether it be our citizen planning advisory commission who worked really, really hard on this. And for folks that don't know, um, that planning commission is made up of, of your neighbors, folks from across the county who give up their uh, their evenings and I'm sure some weekends, uh, preparing for meetings in order to, uh, come into those planning commission meetings and, uh, and, and make decisions on, on what to advise the county commission to do. Um, and throughout the process, they were taking comment and they were making adjustments and asking questions and then ultimately landed on uh, the alternative three hybrid. Uh, and today you heard us, uh, accept their recommendation or our resident planners', uh, recommendation on alternative threes hybrid, uh, with some adjustments based on public comment that we received. Um, and so uh, we want to continue to try to be responsive when people make, uh, material, uh, comments on, on the work that we're trying to do on, on the people's behalf. And so um, appreciate all of the effort that went into this. And I know that, I know that there were some frustrations about, um, you know, doing an open house or not doing an open house. Um, and I know Commissioner Netherlands mentioned today that he's had, he gets fourteen comments when he goes into the grocery store and I don't doubt it. I think, uh, you know, we both, um, Commissioner Trask and I are caught in similar situations and, and really enjoy that part of this job. Um, you know, and certainly in some of those conversations, this planned action EIS over the past two years, uh, I'm sure maybe came up even. And I know Commissioner Netherlands was probably encouraging those folks to get involved in the process. Um, and so the best thing that we can do is we can be, uh, you know, continue to communicate with our neighbors in this community and, and continue to send out reminders and put information out there for folks to participate. Um, and so I, I think, uh, while, uh, you know, it's not a perfect plan, uh, it is a, uh, it is a good plan. It is a strong plan, um, that starts to address the environmental concerns of growth and development in the Belfair urban growth area, uh, that adjusts zoning where, uh, where growth is likely to occur, uh, putting it in an area that is, uh, you know, respectful of our, uh, environmental, uh, you know, critical areas. Um, but also in a way that allows the county to start capturing, uh, transportation mitigation fees that we're, uh, putting more of that responsibility back on to the developers who want to come into this community. Um, we know we need transportation improvements. We know that we need housing. We know that we want more jobs and opportunity here. Um, so that we have people that are, uh, you know, stabilizing utility rates, that it's stabilizing not only our Belfair sewer rates, but stabilizing your PUD power rates, stabilizing your Belfair water rates. Um, you know, and that they're contributing to public safety and education and fire protection and emergency medical services. Um, you know, to continue to provide, uh, high-quality services for the residents of Belfair and Mason County more broadly. So, um, I was happy to see that we were able to get, uh, some support on some of the issues from all three of us, others not. And I understand that these, these processes can be like that sometimes, but certainly grateful for, uh, everybody's work over the past two years, including Commissioners Netherlands and Trask, as well as the folks who showed up today. So, um, if, uh, there's no other discussion, uh, I will call, yeah, Commissioner Netherlands, go for it.
Yeah, just one more second. Uh, just to say thank you for all the work, even though I disagree with how the, uh, uh, outcome, uh, and the inability, in my opinion, to reach out to the community. Uh, one of the reasons why I didn't post anything last night is there was a post that came up regarding one of our employees, Kel Rowan, who I think actually does an incredible job and I wanted to make that real clear. Uh, I didn't think it was appropriate to, to go after, uh, her on a personal level. Uh, the work that she's put in, even though, like I said, I disagree with how we've gone out to the public, but not with her work. And I don't want there to be any confusion of that. So Kel Rowan, thank you for all your hard work and thank you to, uh, all the others that put in work on this as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, okay, any other, uh, discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
And with that, the motion carries. Uh, Kel, we've reached the end of our items for item ten point three, correct?
That is correct. And I know that Lisa and Kevin have some work to do just to wrap up that, that planned action ordinance, given the, um, the, uh, votes that you've taken. And so we will be bringing that ordinance back. So I'll work with Mackenzie to make sure that she has all the correct copies for, uh, your signatures.
Okay, excellent. Very good. Thank you. Thanks Lisa, thanks Kevin. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. We appreciated working with staff and you.
Thank you.
Much. Uh, okay, uh, moving on to item number eleven, our board calendar and reports. Uh, Commissioner Netherlands, Commissioner Trask, and then I'll flip the chair.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, in the last week, so we had the, uh, area command meetings, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization. We actually had a town forum up in North Mason, uh, in Allen regarding transportation. Wonderful forum. Great to get out there amongst everybody in the, the state, uh, showed up there. Dennis Engel did, and so did some of our staff and wanted to say thank you for them coming out there. I met with the, the, uh, executive director of the ARC. I met, uh, we had a board meeting of Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, uh, meeting with the audit committee and another forum, uh, the week later for criminal justice and safety issues regarding the North Mason area. Again, very well attended, about seventy people attended that as well. Uh, thank you to Chief Sperling and to, uh, Tim Whitehead and Mike Dorsey, who also came up to North Mason to speak with the people. And I think they did a great job and they represent the county very, very well. This next coming week after this meeting, today we have Mason Transit Authority meeting, North Mason Chamber, uh, retreat, Mason County Housing Authority meeting, the meeting of the Cemetery Board, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization Executive Board meeting, Area Command, uh, North Mason Community Voice is also having, uh, apparently a forum on criminal, uh, issues and crime issues up in the North Mason area and a meeting of the lawn, uh, enforcement and firefighters board. And that brings us back and we start all over again.
Commissioner, Commissioner Trask?
Thank you. So, um, yeah, I think we've all been pretty darn busy the last few weeks. Um, this afternoon I have a Mason Transit Board meeting, um, nutrition and meals program meeting, Turning Point Board meeting, a, um, meeting with a bunch of amazing women, um, EOC meetings, a chamber meeting, it's the state of the county, uh, WASAC, LSC, meeting, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, and then, uh, we meet at, at the county level regarding legislative, or legislative, uh, priorities and we discuss bills. President's Day is on the twenty first. So have a great President's Day. Um, uh, Community Action Council, I have a Pack Mountain Board Retreat in Aberdeen, I'm with the EOC meeting, WASAC, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, another legislative meeting. Um, and then we are back here for Monday for EOC briefings and WASAC virtual assembly.
Great, thanks Commissioners. A few things going forward this week, uh, after this meeting, uh, I'm gonna hop on the Southside YMCA's Advisory Board meeting. Uh, also have a meeting with, uh, representatives from the Arc of the Peninsulas, uh, as well as our Mason Transit meeting, uh, have Hooked now Courtney and Council, uh, this week, uh, as well as canvassing board and the Thurston Mason, uh, BH ASO Governance Board meeting. Uh, also have a meeting with our county representative on the Timberland Regional Library Board, uh, as well as the follow-up meeting to the canvassing board, which is, uh, certification of the February, uh, election. Uh, following week have the, uh, EDC Legislative Committee meeting, uh, and then I'm out, uh, in the field with Public Works, uh, looking at some road projects and opportunities. Um, and then also have the Sheriff's Breakfast, um, at the end of the month, followed by, uh, Monday briefings, uh, and then my regular check-in with uh, staff at the BH ASO and then back for our March first, uh, Commissioner meeting and then our evening, uh, public meeting with, uh, Belfair Sewer. Uh, Commissioners, having gone through our agenda, are there any other items?
Just to comment, it looked like we had a, a squirrel or something come into our frame under the hands, arms, uh, thing. But with that, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
The movement in second that we adjourn, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And the motion carries. Have a good day, everybody.
Thanks, you too.